Good evening. And welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for September 16th, 2019. For anyone who is in the audience, if you want to follow along with our agenda, you can find the agendas outside of the door to the right. You also find blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board tonight. If you tuned in to see a lot of discussion on the items that are on our agenda, this is the meeting that you want to tune into. Because this is where we do delve into the items that already have been brought to the board on at least one occasion and perhaps more. But tonight is a more in-depth discussion of those items. Also, if you are watching from home and you want to follow along, go to our website, lavoniapublicschools.org. Highlight over the Board tab and you can drop down to agendas and you can follow along with us. So, we'll get going tonight. Item one is Audience Communications. And I do not see anyone in the audience with a blue slip and I do not have any. So, we'll move right to item two, Committee of the Whole. We have one item on the Committee of the Whole tonight and that is item A, Selection of Voting Delegates for the 2019 MASB Delegate Assembly. And Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you, President Johnson. Annually, they have, the Michigan Association of School Boards holds one of their largest conferences and professional development opportunities for school board members across the state. At that meeting, a delegate assembly will be held on Friday, November 8th at 5:30 PM. We had had some prior discussion at the study session about whether or not any of our board may be attending and if so, if they would like to serve as a delegate or an alternate. So, I'm just checking in. We initially had Mrs. Bradford and President Johnson, who had both indicated they would be able to attend with alternates that may be attending, Trustee Centers, Trustee Jarvis, and Secretary Bonnefield. Have there been any changes to that?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Mrs. Frank?
I had indicated at the last meeting that I may be able to go, but I've looked at my calendar and it just doesn't align. So, for those at the table who don't know that, I've blanked my own name off of that list. Feel free to leave me on as an alternate if you'd like. At the last minute, something might change, but it does not look like it.
Okay. So, shall I have Mrs. Wozniak put that on the agenda for next week and then we'll submit that up to MASB?
That's right.
Okay.
I might also indicate, anyone who wants to take classes will need to have that on for next week's. Yeah, we should do it next week.
Yes. We have had a couple of board members reach out, so once you know, the schedule is included in your packet. And once you have that information, we'll go ahead and add that on the agenda for next week.
Okay. Anything else on A?
I just wanted to remind board members that you should have received the worksheet for High Impact School Governance in your packet that was sent to you on Thursday. And so, if you have that and have some time to review the vital behaviors of our High Impact School Governance work and have an opportunity to select a first and second choice, then I will compile those and bring those to our study session on October 7th. So, if you are able to get those to me by September 30th, that would be great. I'll put a couple of reminders in between now and then.
Thank you.
Okay. That'll take us to item three, our Curriculum Committee. And Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, the Curriculum Committee will be discussing the updated Human Growth Videos and High School Sexuality Curriculum with Mrs. Archibald and Mrs. O'Brien.
Good evening. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Good. Mrs. Archibald and I are here to share some updates to the health curriculum for our fifth, sixth, seventh, and 10th grades. She has been working with the committee for the past year to look at updated human growth videos and adding common terminology for our LGBTQ community to our 10th grade human sexuality curriculum that's been recommended by Michigan Department of Education. She's going to share who's on her committee and the process that they use to come up with tonight's recommendations and then I'll share a little bit more about what we're doing.
So, this past year, we updated our sex ed advisory board. And you do that through a blank form. They send it to me. I try to get representation from all three levels, the fifth, sixth, the seventh, and the 10th grade. And we have a really wide range. We have fifth, sixth, seventh, and 10th grade parents. I have health teachers from all those levels. And from the community, I have parents from all three levels. We have healthcare worker. We have a clergy. I have an attorney and I have a firefighter. So, we have a wide range to bounce our ideas off. So, the goal from this past school year was to update our videos. Our videos have been very dated. It's very hard to find curricula that is up-to-date and relevant. So, what we did was, I took the teachers from each of their grade levels. We met. We decided what videos that they liked. Bring that back to our board. When we did that, we went through the videos again. We had discussion. It was really nice to have such a support from parents and the great ideas that they had was really a very important part of this whole process. We also have one 10th grade lesson that we're updating to our 10th grade sex ed curriculum. It will be Lesson Two. It is called "What is Sexuality?" And it is talking about our sexual minority youth. These students need to feel secure, at least in one class. And I certainly hope that it would be health class. At the end, they gave us ideas, suggestions. We actually even changed a little bit based upon everybody's ideas. And I think that made for a much stronger lesson that you will see.
I want to make sure, you didn't mention a student on your committee?
Oh, sorry.
But you did have a student on your committee.
I do have a student. And she was very, very frank. Just a really neat personality. Such old wisdom in such a young student. So, it was very refreshing to have that.
Thank you. So, this evening, we're asking for your approval to update our human growth videos for our upper elementary students for human growth unit. Updated videos for our 7th grade health, human growth unit within the health class. And then, the 10th grade health, human sexuality unit. Like Mrs. Archibald said, these videos we've been, we are replacing are quite outdated. And we're not changing our curriculum. We're just updating this piece of our materials, our resources for teachers. And then, we will also be adding the one lesson to our sexuality unit. So, the committee spent time and careful consideration about what information they wanted to share about gender identity. And teachers will be trained through Wayne County RISA and with Mrs. Archibald so that we have the consistency of delivery of the curriculum. And this lesson will provide our students with overview of different aspects of sexuality, the differences between masculinity and femininity, and the terms and definition on gender identity, including LGBTQ terms. All of our human growth and sexuality units require parents to opt-in to that part. So, even in 7th and 10th grade curriculum, this unit, parents need to opt-in. Human growth has always been an opt-in at 5th and 6th grade. Parents are communicated with, through, at open houses when parents attend their student schedule in 7th and 10th grade. We have parent meetings at the upper elementaries. And then, also, letters are sent home to parents to inform them of the upcoming, like 5th, 6th does it in the spring, that this unit's coming up. The lesson change for 10th grade has been requested by both staff and students so that we teach accurate terminology and so that all students have a clear understanding of the terms. Questions may we answer for you?
Before we take questions, would you spend just a few minutes sharing with the community what you've taken the board through at two prior public meetings that we've had? Because we've spent an extensive amount of time reviewing this information and the board has with regard to reviewing the videos and the lesson materials and then you've taken them through that, so.
Sure. So, over the last several meetings, what we have done is we've provided the board with the links to the videos. So, all of the updated videos are housed on our Lavonia Public Schools YouTube site. So, it is on the overall website of YouTube, but it's held for Lavonia Public Schools. So, we've shared all the updated videos for 5th, 6th, 7th, and 10th grade. And we've shared the lesson that we are adding and have walked the board through what the format of that lesson is and what the activities students will do, the lesson targets and the success criteria that we are looking for at the end of that lesson. It's one of 10 lessons.
10?
12 lessons in that human sexuality unit in health.
Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to briefly go over, I believe, tell me if I'm wrong on this, that when you selected your committee, there was an email that was sent out to everybody within the LPS community that anyone could be on your committee, correct? It wasn't like we chose PTA people or anyone in the LPS community who wanted to be involved with this was able to have an opportunity to reply? So, it went to everybody. So, there was a little bit, just like you said, of everybody represented in the committee? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
So, I just, I 100% agree with everything that we've done. What I would like to ask is that this not be set off to the side and forgotten about for the next 10 years because we've made improvements. Personally, I think it's too little, too late. My theory as a parent was, I wanted my kids to be armed with the information before they had to make the choice. And I took a lot, I took a lot of beating from other parents that I was telling my kids what to do. But my theory was, if they were armed with the appropriate information, when that time came that they were faced with that decision, they had good information to go on. I think a lot of the stuff that we're providing, and I know some parents want to do this at home and there's, we've talked a lot about what our community can bear. I just, it still really bothers me that we're not providing some of this and all, and not just the 10th grade curriculum that we're talking about, but some of the other stuff. Our kids are learning this younger and younger. It's just a fact of life. There's, with social media and television. And I don't think that we're doing our kids any favor by not meeting them in the same place where they're at. I think when you get to 10th grade and you're talking about these issues, they've already developed opinions. They've already, if they're going to bully, they're already bullying. If they are in, you know, the different groups at this point are already forming their own opinions about who and what they are and where they want to go. And I just, I think it would be very, it would be good for our kids to be able to have this information ahead of time and not be afraid of what it is. The other thing is, we pat ourselves on the back about clergy and firemen and stuff like that. What I'm not hearing is that there, and we all wear two hats or more hats, right? We all can be a fireman and a clergyman and we can all be on the PTA or whatever we are. But what I'm not hearing is that we had representation from these communities. Was it, and I'm not, you don't necessarily have to answer this question. It's more rhetorical. But I guess, and you know, Crystal mentioned that the call went out and I didn't realize that to have, you know, different parents on there. But I guess, I would have liked to either seen or heard that we had representation from the community that we're trying to serve. So, and you can share what you feel is appropriate or not. I'm not trying to delve into anybody's personal life, but I just, those are just sort of where I'm at with it. I mean, the kids are in the midst of this. You know, somebody who's been there, done that, has had to go through all that. These kids are going through all this. And when I say these kids are going through this, I mean, it sucks to be a teenager sometimes, no matter what's happening, you know? It's hard to be a teenager. And I think it always has been and as the generations move on, we all, the teenagers face different challenges. But, you know, whatever that may be, whatever decisions that they're making, I just, I'd like to see us to have some adult feedback on, you know, the same perspective. And we talk about, well, the adults in the community, this is all they can bear. But what does that group look like? Are we, are we really, are we really representing our community as a whole? Because I, I'm picturing this group as very much looking like this group. And I'm wondering, do we have the voice? And again, we can't, you can't, you can lead a horse, but you can't make him drink, right? So, you can't force people to be on the committee. But, you know, are we serving our at-risk community? Those kids have a whole, whole different host of things going on as opposed to, you know, some of the families, some of the other families that we have in the district. So, I think we've become very, when we talk about our community, sometimes I think we bring it down to a very narrow scope and we forget that we have a very, 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 very broad demographic in Lavonia. And, you know, are we honestly including those groups in sharing their opinions? And again, I mean, you can only do so much. So, I'm not faulting anybody for them not being there, but I don't know if there's some way to be able to make the group. And I know, and it's the same thing with our group here. It's, are we really representing our community? And it's a struggle, but.
So, one of the things, I just want to make sure that I think I heard you say is, can we make sure we keep a pulse on our community on this topic?
Yes. And keep moving forward to try and keep upgrading because we get to, it's like raising the dues, right? If you raise the dues on a club every year, nobody notices it 50 cents, so. But when you wait 10 years and raise the dues $10, then everybody's like, well, they go nuts about it, right? And so, it's the same thing is, I just, I feel like we need to keep moving forward with this rather than however, what the videos were, what, 15, 20 years old, something like that?
Older than.
So, I mean, if we, you know, keep moving forward and keep working on it and keep it up-to-date and that, because I think these are one of those things, it's hard to talk about, right? It's difficult to talk about. It causes a lot of emotions and it causes a lot of angst and it's not something that you just want to like dive into every day. But I think for our kids' sake, these are the kind of things, you know, there's, there's so many things out there. And the health class covers drugs and alcohol and whatever else, you know, a whole myriad of stuff. And we need to keep up with that. What is the new drug of choice? What are the kids doing, you know? Couple of years ago, it was, I don't know, that potpourri stuff. Now, that's gone and there's something else, right? And so, if the curriculum still is talking about old stuff because we haven't kept up, you know, anyway, so, sorry.
Mrs. Bradford?
I think this is a great start. I know, I don't feel it's too little, too late personally. I think that we have to be aware of our students we're serving and this is a good way to start that discussion going. I think it's a very difficult topic. There's a lot of different opinions on when students should be taught some of this terminology. And I think it's a, this is a good start for that. And yeah, we can continue to delve forward, but I think for now, I want to thank the committee for updating the videos because that was really, really important to have updated videos and things that kids could relate to a little better. And as far as the 10th grade lesson, parents have a choice. They can opt-out if they don't want their children to partake in that lesson. And I think that's the right thing for a parent, to be able to have that opportunity to choose whether or not they want their child. They may want to talk with, and hopefully, our parents are talking to their kids. It is a difficult topic. So, it's important that the school covers that material and I'm happy with how it worked out and the terminology. So, thank you.
Mr. Centers?
So, I wanted to thank you and your team that obviously, it can be a difficult topic. And, you know, it's important that students are able to learn correct terminology and it gives them opportunity to spell any inaccuracies they may have heard. I think equally important, though, is that the other part of this is, you know, we've talked about how students who are LGBTQ sometimes, oftentimes are bullied and have resulting mental health issues with that. And our climate and culture that we really, really work on a lot here is especially important, I think, when it comes to kids who are, who are different, if they look different, if they identify different. So, you know, I applaud the district for, you know, making sure we're up-to-date, but also putting such a big emphasis on our climate and culture that if someone is different, you still need to treat that person with respect and learn to understand them and everything else. So, overall, it's, all these conversations are what's best for kids. And, you know, Lavonia Public Schools always puts that question first. And for that reason, I, you know, I'm proud of everything we're doing and I want to thank you all for your hard work on this.
President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I have a couple of questions that I want to ask before, and it may temper or change my thoughts. Who actually updated the videos?
The teachers and myself.
Okay. In our district? We did that?
We do it ourselves.
We do it ourselves? Okay.
We don't make the videos.
No, we do not make them.
Right. That's what I was asking. Who makes the videos?
A variety of different.
Who produces them?
Amaze.org is a big one right now. YouTube. And then, there are companies I can't give you a name.
Okay. And there've been videos around for a long time, right?
Yes.
Although they've only been updated recently, they go back quite a ways.
Yes.
I take it?
Yes.
Okay. So, and this is, so, when I hear too little, too late, this has been going on for a long time. We're just talking about an update. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Our videos were, they're over 20 years old. And so, we are looking for current, students that looked current, so, didn't look like they're from the 70s or the 80s. So, the content is the same content. It's just the venue, students are seeing it in the video.
And there's been upgrades based on, our norms have changed somewhat over that period of time.
Yes.
But this is also an opt-in program. So, it's not like our students, and what Mrs. Bonnefield was saying, she talks about the students, but this is really a parent opting and the student doesn't have a choice to do it. It's the parent, right?
Correct.
So, we've got to have, you have to educate the parents, not so much the children, the students, as to what's in them and allow the parents then to make that choice as to whether they want their student to see those.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So, I understand it's a different age. It's tough for our teenagers. But in reality, it all starts with the parents allowing their student to see the videos and the content.
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure I was understanding the whole process.
Yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Frank?
First of all, one of the things that I've been impressed with since my now-young adult kids and college-age kids were young and going through sex education and health classes for the first time and when they began at 5th grade, is that as far back as I can remember, we've had a diverse group on the committees that have chosen some of the materials for our sex education classes.
Yes.
I mean, I remember this kind of a mix and a range of personalities and vocation all the way back, literally as far back as I can remember. So, thank you for doing that. Because having that kind of a mix, having a complete, as Mrs. Frank was saying, having this option open to anyone in the committee who would, community who would like to participate and then making sure we do have on that committee a diverse group of folks gives a lot of comfort to me, I know, as a parent in the district. Because the fact as I see it is, our community is going to be very diverse on these issues. On sex education, before you even add in the one lesson on the LGBTQ, on sex education period, we're going to have a whole range of families who want to handle that entirely in their home to entirely in the school, because women are not choosing for whatever reasons to handle it, and somewhere in the middle. So, I commend those folks who chose to put their time and effort into being on the committee and handle a delicate and sometimes difficult task. And for you two for leading them. But I'm proud of our community for having a really diverse group of people. Because I think it does represent, as best we can, the diversity that's in our community. And I think this is one of these issues that, like several others, I've told some folks sitting on the Board of Education, sometimes we do some very mundane work. We approve the bulk self-purchase and the paper purchase and so forth. Sometimes it's, they're much, much more complicated. Yeah, sorry about that, Phil. Sometimes they're much more complicated and frankly, much touchier issues. So, I thank you for having a diverse group of people on that committee. Because it gives folks who are just kind of looking from the outside in, for lack of a better perspective, or better term, a little bit of comfort that there's already been a bunch of eyes on this before it even gets to the board level for approval. But I do want to thank our committee that's working on it and for our district. I commend our district for the fact that we have had a diverse group of folks working on this topic for literally decades. One thing that I wanted to bring up tonight, when we studied this a couple of times in study sessions, at one point, I believe it was Mr. Johnson who coined it well, that the information that we are presenting right now that's different than we had in the past, which is the one lesson out of 12, and again, it's 10th grade only, just so folks didn't catch that. This is not for some of our lower grades. This is at our 10th grade level. This is information that is intended to educate as to what this terminology means. And it is not meant to advocate for choices. The advocating for choices for our young folks, that is something that absolutely is for they, their family, their parents, whatever. But that is something that's not being done in this class. I just want to make sure that folks understand. What we are doing is educating on the terminology that's being used. Folks as parents may feel very comfortable with it, may feel very uncomfortable with it, but what I came down to after really thinking about it for a long time is, whether you love it or hate it or somewhere in between, it's the reality of our culture today that this terminology is being used. It's being used on television. It's being used in the movies. It's being used in the hallways at school or at the grocery store. So, I'm glad that we are at least going to teach our children what these terms are and what they mean correctly and appropriately. If they don't know appropriately what these, what these terms really mean, then how can we expect them to use them properly? Or as Mr. Centers alluded to, make sure they don't use them improperly. I was at a seminar not too long ago and they were talking about harassment and that many kids don't know what harassment is, really. What's the difference between flirting and sexual harassment, for example? And if we don't really define that and give examples of what that is, how can we expect them not to do it? I was thrilled to come back to LPS, literally three days later, view our videos that we have chosen and see that we are teaching our kids what that looks like. So, they can't be accused rightly or wrongly. But I mean, if we're expecting certain behavior of our kids in terms of harassment, as one example, we have to teach what it is. If we're expecting our students to use terms correctly and not use them incorrectly, we have to make sure they understand what those words mean. And as long as we are looking at with this lesson, the first that LPS is using on the whole LGBTQ topic, I'm glad that we are going at this as an education, we're teaching to educate, not to advocate. And I just think it's very important that folks understand that's what we're doing and why. The videos that are going to be utilized, if a parent chooses to view those ahead of time, and viewing sexual education materials has been something, again, that's gone back decades. This is nothing new. But if parents wanted to view those videos... But if parents wanted to view those videos, how could they do it?
Contact their teacher or myself.
Okay. And we've mentioned YouTube, you won't find it if you're out there looking at LPS YouTube.
No.
So, okay, you're going to have, and you're going to have to find out through your teacher which videos they are and go from there.
Yes.
Okay. Let's see here. I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Miss, no questions?
When is the next time you would be gathering the Sex Ed Advisory Committee, therefore, when is the next time parents or community members may look for that email inviting them to participate?
It would be two more years.
Two more years.
Because we do a three-year term.
Okay. And that goes out in a mass email to the parents of all 14,000-plus students?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Frank, just a couple of things about your committee I wanted to just touch base on, too. I just wanted to commend your committee as well. You sent us the videos to review, to look through, and I was doing it in the car on some drive time with my husband and he sat through two and was like, can you please turn that off? And so, you guys that watched video after video after video and chose which videos to do, I just want to commend you because that was a long process and when you're talking to fifth graders for adults to watch these fifth grade videos continuously. So, I just wanted to thank your committee because we all have things to do on Monday nights and they sat through a lot of videos. So, I commend you for that. There's been a lot of talk, too, about the 20-year, you know, they're 20 years old and more, but I also think we've had a lot of curriculum updates and it, we have, as a district, it's been on a list of curriculum things that we've been trying to update. So, several things, we have a cycle and we're trying to shorten that cycle so things don't wait 20 years, but I think that it's not something that, I think that it's timely in terms of, we'd like to not have it be 20 years, but I think a lot of our cycles in terms of curriculum and getting the funding to be able to add new curriculum has taken longer than we wanted to and in the past with the, with how finances were, that we're now able to do, update a lot more curriculum than we were in the past. Is that correct? Okay. And then the last thing I just wanted to say was about those videos is so many of them, like we said about the ones that were old and outdated, the new ones you've done cartoons, they have like cartoons, not cartoons like funny, but just cartoon stick figures. So, it is not going to be as dated and if they watch them again in 20 years, it's a good investment, they will still be relevant, hopefully, the content will be, but you won't see such dated kids with dated hairstyles and that sort of thing. So, I think that the videos that you chose are going to be longer lasting and I think that that was a great idea, the way that you chose several of those. The last thing was just if a, and this might not, you might not be here yet, but if a parent does request it, would you send them the link or is it more come into the office? And you might not be there yet.
I would have them come in.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions? Mrs. Burton?
And just as a matter of clarification, this material is looked at not once every 20 years.
No, no.
It's every three years, but is that correct that it's?
We updated ongoing as needed.
Okay, okay. And part of the problem, as I understand with the videos, is there simply aren't a lot of them out there. It's not something with, like, some of our other academic subjects where there's a lot of material produced every single year. This is just a subject, a subject matter where there simply are not a lot of videos updated on a very regular basis for which we can choose from.
Correct. The Amaze.org, which was a lot of our videos, that was made about a year ago. So, the Sex Ed Advisory Board community were jumping up and down.
Yeah, that we've got some to choose from that are good and current and recent. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in the comments? This is Bonfield.
Voting on September 23rd.
Yes, please.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're still sitting.
Next item on the Curriculum Committee is the Advanced Ed Parent Survey. Take it away, Mrs. O'Brien.
I am passing out. Survey documents, I'm going to put a couple of them on slides so that they would be a little bit bigger for us to look at. So, you all have a set of district summary of our parent and student surveys that we gave in the spring, so I just want to kind of review a little bit. Two years ago, we decided to use the Advanced Ed surveys as a part of our preparation for our engagement review, but we also looked at them, would they be a good replacement for the Gallup poll for us to collect some of our climate and culture work? So, we looked at the survey questions that were offered by Advanced Ed and we added some that fit our climate and culture work, so we made some adjustments, we brought it to the DSIT team, we added a few extras, especially on the parent survey that I'll go over in a minute, so that we wanted to make sure we were not just hitting the targets that Advanced Ed was suggesting, but also the targets that we wanted to gather information so that we weren't giving our parents multiple surveys. We determined to give the parent survey and the student survey in the spring at the end of a school year and then next month in October, we'll send out our staff surveys once their year has begun. We thought the end of the year was maybe not the best time to give it to our staff when they have all the things that they have. So, the top one that you have is the parent survey and I've just kind of summarized, and the first thing I want to share with you is there is very little difference in our district averages from last year to this year. The most differences is three to four percentage points and many of our numbers are the same as last year. And overall, almost all of our top answers for each question are the same with a very, very few changes. So, I did give you some of the demographic information, which, so our, this is our parents, so 70% of our moms or female guardians are completing the survey, over 30% of our dads and male guardians, and then some of our race and ethnicity. Interesting at the bottom is how long they've been with the district. That's, again, very similar to last year. This is my first year, second year, third year, four or more. And that, those percentages, so that stability, even though all the numbers were stable, I thought, well, so that, there's not a lot of jump there. So, I thought that was interesting information. So, if you remember, some of the questions from Advanced Ed have people choose four of the following and they have some metrics for having people choose four. So, which four of the following phrases best describe in general the kinds of things teachers in your child's school say to students? So, our top four are the same as last year. So, the column closest to the question is this year's, 2019. It said it at the top, but as I made my slides, I didn't have that. So, but very little difference. So, explain your work went down 7%. That's probably one of our largest changes, but yet, if you look at some of the other ones, the bottom three, even though they're not our top four, we went up and you took the right approach, I'm interested in your answer and I'm interested in your thinking, which kind of is the shift of inquiry-based teaching that we are moving towards and so that was very, like, I'm looking for those kinds of answers to change. What kinds of things your child is most often doing while at school? So, those are the same. Last year, we had a three-way tie for the third one, so writing and completing worksheets and taking tests, we're all 42%. And this year, it just all was writing, was at 43%. So, not a lot of change at all.
Do we need to interrupt for a minute?
Of course.
Mrs. Frank?
You probably said this, Mrs. O'Brien, did you say this is K-12, parents of anybody in the district or just, so when they say this is my first year, probably kindergarten or first year in the district and then after three years or four years, like they could be in sixth grade or eighth grade or 12th grade, right?
Correct, it could be a new parent who moved in at fifth grade and it's my first year also.
And so, when we say gender, like 30, do we have a, do we have any type of idea of how many, like the percentage of parents that filled out the survey? You know what I'm saying, like how big of a sample this is? Is this pretty representative of our families? Is it just 100 families?
I'll get you the number. I'll get you the number. I did not put the number into that.
That's okay.
Mrs. Burton?
For the question, what kinds of things do your, does your child's teacher say a lot and what is your child doing at school a lot? I thought of this when I saw this survey myself. How do parents accurately know that? And I say the same thing of myself. Even when we are in at open house, we are in, perhaps we're helping in the classroom for an hour here or there, I think this is a very difficult question to get an accurate answer from a parent because we're surmising what we think is happening.
Correct. And so, these are directly from Advanced Ed and we got that feedback last year. I had parents contact me, how would I know what the teacher says to my child? How would I?
Right.
But there's a reason they, for a parent to surmise those things gives us some information. So, there's a reason they chose these questions and so, yes, some parents said, so I didn't answer that question because I have no idea, and other parents said, I think this, this and this and this, and chose their top four.
Based on conversations with their students or?
Sure. Okay. Can we change those questions or, I mean, do we utilize that? Or can we not change it to be Advanced Ed, yeah, compliant? Do we have to have their questions? Because do we utilize, I mean, I feel like there's like 20 questions that I would love to get the answers, you know, as a board to know what parents are thinking. And I just think one of the, I'm not sure, but maybe you as an educator, you know, this is really telling you something that I'm not understanding what it's telling us. I just feel like, you know, getting the best information from the parents, I love these questions about, do you feel welcome in the school? Do you feel like you're, you know, we're meeting the needs of our students, like solving deeper into that or you feeling, you know, maybe a climate and culture, something like that, but can we change this or no? Is it, it is what it is and that's the way it is?
So, we have already taken their questions, we brought them to DSIT, we chose questions to keep and we added questions for ourselves. So, we've already done that. I think if we choose a question, we need to keep it as is.
Right, right, right.
In order for it.
Right, right.
To have fidelity.
Right, yeah.
But if we choose not to use a question, then we would choose not to use it.
I think part of the question is, is if we take away too many Advanced Ed questions, would that no longer?
Make it valid.
Count toward a visit, an external review or an external visit? Was, I know we added questions, but I don't think we took away a ton, correct?
So, if you, they actually had a climate and culture and engagement and something else, they actually had three versions of a parent survey that we merged into one. They had three versions of student surveys that we merged into one. So, we've already done some of that shuffling and so, again, I feel like we could make changes and in five years when Advanced Ed came back, we could say this is what we changed and this is why. So, if we owned it, then that makes sense.
So, interactions parents have with staff at your child's school, so respectful, supportive, helpful and comfortable are still the top four. Brief went down, so that I thought, and again, not many percentage points, but that was one area that it went down, so less parents thought the interactions were brief. Which is the following, character traits, so I put the character traits ones on the same slide. Are you made aware of in newsletters and then do you hear about your child, that your child talks about? So, respect was the same for both, made aware of and their child talking about, the percentages from last year to this year and they were both one of the top two. And then responsibility, it was the same in aware of newsletters, I see the greens out there on 2018 for talking about, but we went down in responsibility from 67 to 65. But those are still our top two. And you could, the parents could mark any and all of those. There wasn't a limit. Then we added three questions. So, again, we decided, I feel confident that this school supports the learning needs of my students. So, last year for agree was 47%, strongly agree, so 87% altogether. And again, this year it's 87% of parents between strongly agree and agree, feel that they're confident in that school supports the learning needs of their students. I feel welcome. At my child's school, the percent increase went up for strongly agree and it went down for agree, so again, it's very close. And I support my students setting and achieving learning goals. And so, again, most parents this year, 96% strongly agree and agree. Questions on the parent survey.
Mrs. Frank, one of the things that you had mentioned was there were, you know, many other questions you would like to see us ask or add. Is that something that the board would be interested in having us add to a future study session agenda to take a look at this or to take a look at other, either categories or other questions that we may want to delve into the next time we give this survey? Because we will give this annually each spring.
I just went to a class and it was data-driven and it just, it talked about parent surveys and how we're getting information, and I think for us as a board to know what our parents are saying is vital. I mean, I just really think, not that we, you know, will change, but I just think to be able to get a feel, and I think this is the best way for us as a board to get a feel of how we're serving our students. And so, I think just really poignant questions, I know even as a parent, and again, you know, very involved parent, I was kind of like, I'm guessing, you know, I just don't feel like you got great feedback from me as a parent. And so, I think, yeah, I'm not sure what those questions are, but I think to delve into it as a board, I think gives us great data so that when we're looking at things, we're not like, you know, just making, they're making decisions, but really having data to drive what decisions we're making. I think it really is helpful to me, but it's up to you all if you guys think that's true or?
Mrs. Burton?
I agree that we probably should take this opportunity since we have the opportunity. This survey is not extensively long. If it was seven pages, then I would say no, people are going to just quit. But in this day, when parents have more and more choice about where to send their students to school, I would like to know how, what they think and how we can best serve their family. Again, sometimes we can do what they're asking, sometimes we can't for one reason or another. But yes, I think if this is already a relatively short survey and we have the opportunity to add a few more questions to gather some more of that data of how can we best serve our families, that we should take advantage of that.
Mrs. Bonfield?
So, I was also like those first couple of questions, I'm like, how am I supposed to know this stuff? But the funny thing is, is we're sitting here talking about it and like, the light bulb went on as to why these questions are important and it's not necessarily that we know what our kids, our teachers are telling our kids, but it's the perception that we get, which may even be more important than what the teachers are actually, well, not that it's not important what the teachers say, but there's a lot, okay, so there's a lot of value in finding out what, perception's reality, right? So, I, but I see how some parents could be like, I'm just going to skip that question. So, I guess my question would be, is there any way to rephrase it so parents aren't like, well, how the heck am I supposed to know, but no one up to, do you know what I mean? Because it's like, now that you're talking about it, I'm like, that's it, I get why we asked that question now and it's very cool. But I don't want a lot of people just skipping it because they don't necessarily have the same light bulb moment.
We can certainly bring it back to a study session and have conversation about the questions.
Or is it something, I mean, I'm not a professional, you know, this is not my thing. So, I mean, is that something that, we can go back to Advanced Ed and say, you know, we've had a lot of feedback about this is really, parents look at it and you read it in black and white, what is my teacher saying? And is there some way to reword the question to make it more answerable without diminishing what the question is really trying to get at?
Right. And Advanced Ed is an international accrediting system, so their questions, they're not going to change their questions. We can change our questions because it makes more sense to us. But they, you know, so they've just redone their standards as we've gone through, so these are brand new. They just came out last year. So, we certainly can make them fit us.
I just, I don't want to dilute what it's trying to get at because we don't necessarily understand. I just, I don't want to dilute what, what it's trying to get at because we don't necessarily understand why they're answering the question, I guess.
Mrs. Bradford?
I think on these first few questions, yeah, they can, you have to surmise what you think. As long as it follows through in the other, to the kids. Like, as long as it coincides and then you can kind of take a look and, and, and see if they're similar. The kids' answers are similar to the adult answers. But I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's worth taking a look at. I don't know how much time we really want to spend on it because what, we do want to get what I think, what everybody, we do want to survey our parents. We want to look at that, but then what are we going to do with that information? So how far will we take it? Is it going to fuel us to make certain changes? So I, well, while I think it's wise to look into it, I don't know how much time we really want to spend on that as far as, you know, how we're going to use that material.
Mrs. Oakwood?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I did want to mention that as these surveys are created by Advanced Ed, there's obviously a significant amount of vetting that goes into the purpose for each question. So it reminds me of a survey, a Gallup survey for workplace satisfaction. That one of the 10 questions is, I have a best friend at work. And I know every time that survey is given, people will say, I don't understand what that has to do with anything. That, that isn't relevant to, you know, my work being of value or meaningful nature. And I think one of the things we need to realize when we take a look at surveys that have been created by an external agency that, that do this across literally thousands of, of schools and districts, not only across our country, but internationally, is that there, there is a, a pretty significant vetting process that goes through. And one of them is the comparison between the responses parents give and the responses students give. So you'll see that the students are also asked, what are some of the regular phrases that your teacher utilizes in class? And part of that is for the district and/or the community to take a look at, what are the perceptions that parents have as far as what is being talked about, what kind of tasks are being done? What are students reporting? And then what is staff reporting? And so part of what you're taking a look at is whether or not those perceptions match reality. If they do or don't, then how we react to communicating effectively on that topic. So that's one piece. I certainly think it's always worthy to take a look at the potential of adding some questions that focus in on some of our district priorities. One of the things I would suggest is, at least until we go through a third year, that we keep the questions as is for the ones that we've given. And then if we want to look at adding some additional, that would certainly make sense. But really you want to have at least three years' worth of data to be able to take a look at that comparison. One of the things I find really fascinating is that within those answers, even though many parents have said to us, I'm really not sure and I'm not sure how to answer the, how steady the responses have been with regard to what most parents perceive to be the most often used phrases and tasks within a classroom. And so I think to at least have three years of data before we would modify one of those questions. But I certainly think we could look at adding some additional questions that would meet our need as we begin to delve into district-based data dialogues, both with the board and with our administrative team.
So you also have our lower L K4 student survey results, our upper L student survey results, and our middle school student survey results. You do not have our high school student results because there was a communication glitch, error last spring. And we did not get the number of students we needed to answer those questions. So we don't have enough students to really give a district average for our high school student survey. So we'll make sure we're better at that this June and make sure that we get enough participation so that we can do that. But each set of data that you have is very similar from 18 to 19. But as Mrs. Oakwood said, I did last year present to you, once we have our staff survey done, the questions that are the same, that kind of will give us that picture. I didn't do that for this evening because we don't have the staff. But what I did do to kind of save time is just kind of compare some of the academic school type questions that our elementary students and our, our upper L and our middle school students answer that are similar. So both groups of kids. So our upper elementary students, we did take their question banks from Advanced Ed's middle school questions. So as, again, as a group at DSIT, we, we determined that those questions were more aligned to an upper L student than the K4 questions. So when I'm in class, so what's their day like? And so our lower L students, number one answer was, I do enough to make a good grade. But when I'm in upper L and middle school, I work as hard as I can. If the classwork is hard to do, and that question was the exact same, and their answers were very much the same, do my very best or try my very best. I'm sorry.
No, you're all right.
Because I can look my computer a little.
Oh, thank you.
That better?
Yep.
So 70% of our kids say, I try a little harder when the, the classwork is hard to do. So that's from K through middle school. Technology, we put that, we made sure we added that in because that was a piece of Advanced Ed standards. So when I use a computer is how the question is worded for K4, when I use technology to learn. And K4, they say to stay on task is their number one. Our upper L say, I'm focused on activity. And our middle school say, I finished the activity is their number one answer. But this particular question, it's pretty spread out. There's a lot of 20%, 20%. So it's, it's, kids using it in lots of different ways is how I interpret our results for that. School rules. So at K4, help me to be a good student or help me to make good choices are K4 students. That was split. At 5-6, let me know what I can do and help me to be a better student. And then our middle school students, let me know what I can do. When do you use what you learn in class? Or for the older students, how do you use the information you learn in class? And both of them say, it helps me to learn other things, or I use that information in this class to help me in other classes. So that continuation, those are the kinds of things that we're looking for, is that our kids across the board have some of those similarities. How they study for a test? Our K4 kids, I study a lot is their number one answer. Our upper L and our middle school, I memorize only the facts and information needed for a test. But it really, that percentage, you know, is about a third. And that's one, again, I would, I would expect, like, I'd like to track that and see how that goes.
Mrs. O'Brant, but I also think it, it shows that the kids are paying attention. You know, like they're being honest because you get all the best answer. You know, you just really are, they really answer it. But they really read it and they, you know, they didn't all mark, you know, I do everything I can for every, you know. I think it shows that they are looking at them and reading the questions.
I'm thinking about it, yep. And then I did the, the traits ones. And again, they're very similar across the board. But so respect and grit and responsibility are the ones that they feel their school has emphasized their number ones. And then that they've used. So our lower L kids, respect, grit, and responsibility. Our upper L, respect, responsibility, and confidence is a big thing at our 5-6s. And then mindfulness comes in at our 7-8.
And to clarify, the K4, it was grades?
Three and four.
Two, three, and four, or three and four?
Three and four.
Three and four.
So it's at our K4 buildings, but 3rd and 4th graders. Thank you for clarifying that. So other questions? So like I shared, I'll be bringing back once we survey our staff and then I will share those results plus I will make those comparisons across the board for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our president Johnson, that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. That will take us to item four, a building in sight, and I will turn it over to Mr. Centers.
Great. Item A is a quarterly dashboard report. Mr. Francis is here and Mr. Scott is joining him as well. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Mr. Smith is currently handing out a 11 by 17 sheet. That's the one I'd forgotten print last time we did the quarterly dashboard, so. Scott took that, took that responsibility back over again. He gave me it one time, it was last time.
You have a lot on your plate, though.
You can almost bulk salt purchase it. Take up a lot of your time.
So as we regularly do, Mr. Smith and plant Maran Cressa, owner's representative, will, will spend a few minutes going through the report. As you know, it originally started as a dashboard report for the 2013 bond. We have added in since then, over the past couple of years, a sinking fund update as well, just to kind of bundle them together. So with that, I will put you in the good hands of Mr. Scott Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello there.
Hi, Scott.
So we have our, our quarter two, June 30th report for the, the bond and the sinking fund, as Mr. Francis stated. Jumping ahead to the budget summary in the upper middle of the page. This is data drawn through September 5th of 2019. The last one was end of March 31st, 2019. Our budget, as you'll see, remains the same at that, just over 202,000 with some journal entries and such. And that's been that way for a number of months. Our current commitments are up to 194 million, 286. That's up just under a million dollars from the last update, so the commitments have started to really slow down. Actual pay though is up to 192 and that's up roughly 4.5 million since that time. Leaving our actual cost of complete, that number continues to drop. So that's, that was about 5.5, now we're down to 1.8. Really where some of the budgets and commitments remains, it's, it's not so much in the construction now. It remains in the furniture, the technology, those sorts of items as well, as well as the owner's contingency. Over on the far right is our three-month look ahead. These are the things that we're currently focusing on. Really the bond is starting to wind down, or has been. Sinking fund still remains active. We have plenty of projects still there for next summer and we'll get to those. So right now, we're in the process of wrapping up Nigirro financially and getting all the punch list items closed out. It was a nice tour for those that could join us over at the, at the facility. As far as I know, everybody's been very pleased with the renovations. I think the building really went through a, a large transformation in the, while we weren't able to do everything, I think the things we chose to do made a lot of sense. And I think it, it made a big change to the building itself. We're also in the process of closing out our, our pavement punch list for this year. Those are all the asphalt replacement projects. Those are all now substantially complete. They're just doing odds and ends to get those wrapped up and then the financial piece. Same as, same with the roofing project, which was the roof replacement work at Johnson. They're currently wrapping up punch list activities there. The athletic field work, that's, that, that construction's actually still ongoing. Obviously, the stadium work's been substantially complete. There are a few open items there that we're working to resolve. The construction of the baseball and softball fields continues on. They're currently over at Franklin High School, working on softball and baseball. And that's kind of staggering with the different contractors involved. So they'll be starting over at Stevenson High School with some of the earth, earthwork stuff next, while the turf is being installed over at Franklin and at the fields there. We expect the baseball and softball should be done probably early November right now. And targeting, you know, to be significantly complete by Thanksgiving. We're also currently underway with some of the boiler, boiler replacement and the toilet room heat work over at the toilet rooms at Randolph. And that work's been ongoing. They're on good pace. Got some of the demo work completed. Will be starting to install some of the boilers in time for the heating seasons this year. Same with Randolph toilet rooms. Those heaters in the, in the bathrooms should be coming in very shortly and those will go in, those will be installed. It's about a three-week process there. For next year, looking ahead to 2020, previously we had approved RTA for roof design work for next summer. And that's, that's the roofs over at Emerson, the Career Center in Rosedale. So they're currently working on the design. In fact, we're meeting next week to kind of look at like a 50% type of design. They're still working on field work. So the plan there is to kind of keep working towards that and then start bidding that out in November and then bring the recommendations to you folks before the Christmas break for recommendation for contract award. We're also, tonight, as a second item, we're going to be looking at a bid or a proposal from NTH who has done all the civil engineering design work for the pavement replacement projects. So we'll be bringing that, and that's for Nigirro and Jackson Early Childhood, to follow up the construction at those sites with, with pavement replacement activities. And then that will continue through and we'll be looking to bid that out in December and bring those in early next year for probably late January at that board session for review. Critical project issues, again, we're, we're trying to wrap up the bond projects and the sinking fund projects from this year. We have the softball fields, the boiler work. Really the big thing is we're starting to just wind down the bonds. So we're working on reconciling the open purchase orders through the district, reviewing the available funds, reconciling bond interest, update available funds that are on it, and create an implementation plan with the district on how or how, what we want to do with, with the remaining owner's contingency and some of the technology furniture items that, where we have budget but not commitments yet. And also, starting next month, in October, we're going to be sitting down with the district now that the sinking fund is passed and creating a strategic implementation plan to kind of finalize the current funds and then also look at projects we want to do with the new, with the new wave of funding. Cash flow finances, again, Series 1 completely closed out. We're into Series 2. We've spent about 81.6 million of the 88.4 on that. That's up about 3.6 million from last update and those are as of July 31st, 2019. And really the, we'll probably drop this off next time. The bond phasing schedule, just showing you what we've completed over the six years of, of construction on this bond. Now that we've completed really the last project that we know about, that doesn't have a whole lot of relevance. But it does show how many projects we have done over the years and, you know, six years into the bond already.
Box is filled in pretty well.
Any questions relative to the information?
Mr. Centers?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. I don't know, we've, we've done these dashboard reports several times. And you take a lot of complicated information and make it really simple to read and look at. I don't know if I've ever said thank you. This is really great for us to look at as a board and the way that you've laid a lot of numbers out is really great. So thank you for that. And you do it often and we take it for granted, but I just wanted to say, thank you for the way this is laid out. A couple of things I just wanted to mention or ask. Punch lists, are we done with, I know you have a couple listed here, but the major school ones, like, like the ones in the past, are we done with those before 2019 or do we still have some that are out there?
Relative to the bond or the sinking?
Yes, no, no, the bond, the bond.
The, the, the.
The schools, like the renovation at the school.
With the completion of Nigirro, we've really, we've touched all the buildings and completed bond scope at all of them.
And the punch list, or do we still have like lingering things that are out there with several schools? I mean, not onesie, twosie, but big punch lists.
Off the punch list, that those should be closed up, but things still then occur and there's generally a two-year warranty on items. So that's different. The punch list is, okay, we just finished. Tell us what is going on here. Oh, there's a, you know, this spot needs some cover up paint on it because it got bumped during the move in or this light panel doesn't have a cover on it. Those types of things get, get addressed. And then as we go on, we find that something may occur. And then, then it turns back to a warranty item if it falls on it.
Right. But we don't have a lot of stuff hanging out that was punch list, more warranty issue.
It's more, it's more things that, that either occur or a simple maintenance on something. Yeah. And if it's out of the, the warranty period, it's just something that LPS addresses.
But we're not hanging out with a lot of things that didn't get done by contractor.
Not that, I mean, you think of anything, so I can't think of anything.
There are a few things and we continue to track those in addition to some of the ongoing work at Nigirro.
But there's not a large.
They're smaller. There's some work at Stevenson. And of course, some of the, the schools that were done five, six years ago. They may not have been scope items, but they may, there may be things that come out of the building now, you know.
Just as an example, we've had some adhesion problems at a couple of buildings with regard to paint. So that's not really a punch list item anymore. It's, it's just an issue that we have. And we brought out, not only the, the company for the paint, but then they brought out Sherwin-Williams and said, we need to figure out how to fix this, right? So then we, we go through those types of things.
Right. And this is more for the board or just for information to? Right, and this is more for the board, or just for information to Webster, sometimes we do, we vote on things and we don't know how it goes or what happens to it, and we redid the entire parking lot at Webster this year, and your team did a fantastic job, I mean, the way that you creatively added more parking spaces without adding more pavement, correct? You didn't add, like, surface area, but you created more parking spaces, and the lines that you did, the traffic flow at Webster is different than it ever has been, and so I think that that is the goal, is to not just put new pavement down, but to make it better and more safe for the kids, and safe for parents that are coming in and out, and so I just wanted to say that, that the flow is just, it really is so much different, and you could clearly see where you're supposed to go, and clearly see where you're supposed to park, and so, I just wanted to say thank you to the board, who, when we vote for these, we don't realize the impact that it's going to have, but it does have, Webster's a school that a lot of parents drive to, because it's a magnet program, and so a lot of parents are driving in, and so I just wanted to thank your team, just a lot of the detail that went in there is really big, and it has made a huge difference, so.
If I may on that, I want to then turn around and also thank Laura Boca, Erin Quinn, the building supervisor, they know the building, they know the flow, they're out there in the mornings, they helped us tremendously in the planning for how it was laid out, and without their input, it wouldn't have come out as good, so.
Thank you.
It was definitely a team effort from everybody.
Yeah, it's really, really good, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, that concludes the quarterly dashboard report.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
I did want to mention one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things you'll see in the critical project issues is to reconcile bond interest and update available funds, and then take a look at an implementation plan for remaining bond funds. So, I wanted to let you know that our core team will be meeting with the team from Plant Maran Cressa in mid-October to take a look at our remaining dollars and a wide variety of project options and needs that exist, and then we'll be bringing that back to the Board of Education, starting with the study session, to have you take a look at that information and make some recommendations with regard to the remaining bond funds. We've certainly met the obligations of the dollars that need to be spent within a certain period of time after the bonds are sold, but as you know, we have some time to spend as we look forward the next couple of years with regard to those remaining bond dollars. So, what are the greatest needs, what areas might we need to revisit, and then what is some future thinking that we want to do about where we'd like to go next? So, we'll be bringing that back to the board in the next couple of months.
Mr. Senators?
Yes.
One other thing, we have, as a board and as individual board members, have said this before, but it bears saying again, I would like to express appreciation to Cressa. You folks have done a superb job for the district, a superb job for the Board of Education. Your work is not our forte, but I absolutely believe we could not have stretched our dollars farther, or we could not have done as good of a job as we were able to do if you were not there as an owner's representative, leading us through that process. Your expertise, and yours individually and of our whole Cressa team, your expertise in doing these kinds of projects, working with the contractors that are in southeast Michigan, has been so, so valuable, and has helped us stretch our dollars further, helped us get economies of scale on a lot of our projects, and put us at ease that we don't have to be the experts on major construction, because we aren't. But I think that we, with you folks doing your job so well, it allowed our Livonia Public Schools team to educate, as opposed to be construction managers. So, thank you so much for your work, and I for one would absolutely heartily give an endorsement to any school district who would like to utilize Cressa. Matter of fact, I would go so far as to say, if they don't utilize Cressa or a similar organization, they're missing out on a valuable opportunity. You guys have been terrific.
Thank you very much, it's really nice to be a part of the team for all these years, and I'm just happy to be here and be a part of it, thank you.
Samezies.
Yeah, I know.
That's actually a pretty good segue into letter B, the NTH contract amendment for the 2020 paving design, and the reason I say it's a really good segue is because Plant Maran Cressa and specifically Scott worked very hard representing Livonia Public Schools, or on behalf of Livonia Public Schools with NTH, we've got a very long-standing relationship with NTH consultants, and, you know, Scott worked in tandem to continue to get the best value for LPS out of a wonderful consulting company and civil engineering company, so we appreciate that, and as I said, it's a very good segue into our next topic, because what we have, and we'd like to show or discuss with the board, is the design contract, and it actually would be a change order to their current contract for NTH, in the amount of 59,100, you do have the letter from Plant Maran Cressa, and the write-up, there's actually 4,500 in there that's for a traffic study at Jackson Early Child Center, so we have talked to the building administrators, both at Nigiero and at Jackson, really just very preliminarily, and one of the things at Jackson is, we want to take a look at, they have a smaller bus loop in the front, but obviously, it's not a traditional elementary school, so we want to do, the consensus was a traffic study, so that's that 4,500 is for, it's right on Linden, we want to make sure we're utilizing the space we have as best as possible. So, long story short, I had mentioned to the board at the study session last week that the plan would be to do three paving projects, but you only see two schools here because NTH had previously designed Johnson Upper Elementary School, which is one of the schools we want to do in the summer of 2020. So, what we're looking at here on this contract amendment is for the design work at Jackson and at Nigiero. And if there's anything you want to add into that summation, or any questions that the board might have.
So, could you confirm the design fees as identified on the letter provided by both Cliff and John? Could you review that with us, the percentage?
Yeah, absolutely, so, in the past couple summers, we've had an agreement with NTH to design and provide construction oversight at 6.62% of the budget for the project, and, you know, the budgets are determined upfront, we've met on site, we've walked it, we've talked about what we think is the right solution there, and in some instances, we haven't gone through and performed the survey and geotechnical work, so we've made assumptions based on what we think and what our professional expertise and what we think the right solution is for that, and we'll get the data on that, it will help us confirm it, and if there's a large deviation between the budget and that plus or minus, you know, it gives the district and the NTH an opportunity to sit down and talk professionally about what's fair and equitable, but we think this is reasonable. So, we're at 6.62% again of the budget, translates to 59,100, but of that 59,100, 4,500 of it is a fee, just to have a traffic consultant come in and look at that, and that's something we've done at Emerson, which is something we've done at other schools.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt was a great example, where, you know, an administrator expresses some concern with the way things are, or the word "safety" comes out as a concern, and there are a lot of parents that come in there, some are in a hurry, if there's a way to look at that and make improvements to it, you know, especially if you can do it creatively, without having to reinvent the lot, that's certainly something we want to look at. So, we're going to do that, so we've included that here in the proposal, in the past, we've kind of added it in afterwards, we know we want to do it here, we're going to put it in right at the beginning.
So, 6.62 has been consistent?
Yep, yes, and it's turned out to be a good number. At Jackson, we're looking at potentially adding some parking in the back, as well as rehabilitating the existing lot, we'll have to see what that means, we need to start engaging in discussions with the local jurisdictions and municipalities to make sure that, you know, there aren't certain permits or stormwater retention requirements that may trigger the additional impervious areas, so we'll get that started once the ball gets rolling. We're also looking at Nigiero, that's a lot that hasn't been touched in a long time, particularly on the east-hand side in the back, showing some real fatigue and some wear, we've assumed kind of some worst-case there, but surprisingly, the main lot has held up pretty well, they don't see a lot of bus traffic there, so that helps as well. But those are things, you know, we'll be looking at some of the play pad areas at Nigiero as well, that's just been, it's been, hasn't had a lot of money, capital invested in it in a while, so, that's why that budget's a little higher as well.
Questions?
With both of those, Scott, are we talking about adding square footage of parking lot, or reavail, or, you know, utilizing the existing parking space, or parking area, in a better manner?
At Nigiero, we'd be looking at really utilizing what's there.
Okay.
There may be an opportunity to trim a little bit out of the back, but we want to, we think on the east-hand side of that building, it's currently really used as parking, but we think it was probably maybe designed as play pad area, and that's why with all the traffic, it's starting to break down there. So, we've assumed we probably need to reinvent that cross-section with new gravel and asphalt, the same thing in the back, there are some signs of something like that. At Jackson, that would be the one where we, there has been, in talking with the building, a request to add additional spots there, and so we need to sit down with them some more and determine what that number is, I think we figured about 7,000 or 8,000 square feet of addition right now currently, that would add like 20 or so spots. So, that's something we'll need to look at, too, you know, they'd be to the back of the building, does that put spots in the right spot? Certainly, we want to sit down, if you look at the back page of NTH's letter, there's some dates in here that I've worked out with NTH, kind of some milestone dates in terms of that, but part of that is sitting down with the building administrators, talking through the scope of work, what's going to be right, and then having, putting us back into the drawing board to implement that on paper, and then share that with them, also have a look at the striping plan and such, and get validation of that before we proceed and get it out to bid.
We'll be with the building administrators at all three buildings, except this isn't, Johnson isn't part of this, but there doesn't really need to be much change to their lot the way it's used, but we'll have them involved, but we want to get some design done first that we have something to work from. Anything else?
We're ready to vote on?
We would like this, please, on the next record meeting.
All right, item C is future consideration of property, sale of property.
Thank you, Scott.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
So, to bring the board, as well as those watching at home, sort of onto the same page, we've had a conversation about this at the study session last week, the report that was done by the Great Northern Consulting Group out of Ann Arbor, Mr. Bill Bowman, but to put everybody on, again, on the same page, who might be tuning in and hearing about this for the first time, this is actually a study that was done as an assessment of valuation of some properties that the district owns. This was last fall, fall of 18, that we engaged Mr. Bowman, he had done the study in the late fall, and then in February of 19, Mrs. Oakwist and I brought it to the board and discussed this particular summation with you. So, at that time, last fall, when the board had requested to get some estimated values of properties, it wasn't every single property that the board owns. Now, we've mentioned in different times, different presentations, that, you know, Livonia Public Schools has almost 700 acres across Livonia and Westland within the district here, and not every piece of property that may be vacant or whatnot, where we're looking, we were really trying to look at a handful of properties that had some actual value that could be, if the board so chooses, could be used for housing development. And so, these five, and the five I'll read off quickly with their acreage, is Adams/Paranville, most recently known as Paranville, on Linden between Inkster and Middlebelt at 12.27 acres, Hull, which is on Linden, just west of the board office here, at 9.5 acres, Jefferson, which is on Henry Ruff and West Chicago, near Devenere Park, and Old Webster, we call it Old Webster, because that's the one that's on Linden, over between Hicks and Newburgh, at that 5 and Newburgh area, and Wilson, which is located on West Chicago, just to the east of Emerson Middle School, 8.74, and I skipped a couple of acreages for you, didn't I? Hull is 9.5, is the last one I mentioned, Jefferson is 8.7, the Old Webster is 9.34, and Wilson is 8.74. And that's, you know, those five, of the five, four of them have, are vacant land, and the fifth, Adams/Paranville, does still have the building on there as of right now. And these properties, again, the board chose and asked Mr. Bowman to look at these because these are viable properties for potential development of residential properties, and that was just a quick summation of the places, I'm not going to get into the report again in detail, some of it is specific information for the board, but in general, we had a conversation, again, in February, and again, last week at the study session, about the value of them, the potential value of them, the current market in the area, the current need for, perceived need for housing in the area, and I actually had a conversation with Mr. Bowman this afternoon to pick his brain on a couple of things, one of them being timing of the market and how it looks, and just to pass along his information, or his opinion on that, is that the market right now is strong, and developers look 18, 24 months into the future and say, you know, we know pretty much what that market's going to be. So, some of the conversation was, you know, do you do things at one time, do you split them up and spread them out, and his opinion was, if there's interest in a sale of more than one property, he would put them together for that reason, as well as, there are some economies of scale that you gain with regard to, a lot of it is really people's time, you know, LPS staff's time, if you're going to do interviews with developers, you have to do it once, some of that is the time that we're repaying a consultant to be working on some of these items. So, that I want to just throw out as well, because it was a conversation and a question that we had last week during the study session, okay? Is there anything that?
I just wanted to mention that, and I know that you know this because we've talked about this, but a lot of this was shared when we first received this report, similar to what Mr. Bowman had done about five years prior to that, and as part of the review of vacant properties and determining valuation, he talks to a number of our partners over at the city as well, and so, as part of this study, one of the things that he did was talk to folks from the Livonia, City of Livonia Engineering Department, the Planning and Community Development Department, take a look at the Livonia zoning ordinances, as well as the parks and recreation. So, it's important to stay in communication with our city partners on those pieces, especially because most of these are zoned currently for public facilities, and if a developer was going to consider any residential development on any piece of land, they would need to be working with the city with regard to any of those zoning changes. So, in the report that was reviewed with you last February, and again, last week, you saw that that information was included as well, so it included taking a look at the utilities that were accessible and available, as well as a number of other items with regard to potential zoning, being adjacent to a park area, et cetera.
So, with that, we just want to let you open it up for discussion for the board members, and we're here to answer questions if there are any.
I just have a clarifying, you said we would, you said your recommendation was to put two together, your meaning, sell two at the same time, not put them together, not sell two properties, your two properties separately.
Correct, and a further clarification, my recommendation isn't necessary to sell multiple properties, what I was saying is, if the board so chooses to sell more than one, the recommendation would be to not stagger them, but rather to do them at the same time, not necessarily, to put them out for bid at the same time, correct?
Yes.
I got you.
So, one of the things we did, as we talked about this, both in February and in our study session, was really to take a look at a couple of things, one, what does our board policy say with regard to the sale of property, and certainly, I shared that in your update again last week, it is under the purview of the board, and is recommended by district administration, that not only to gain valuation on the property, but a determination of whether or not it's appropriate to put a piece of land for sale, and then if it does have a school or a building or some type of facility on that, the disposition of that property and how to move forward with it. And the board had spent some time, just a couple of years ago, reviewing that policy, clarifying the process and procedure for doing so, and so, that was something that we reviewed and that was in your packet as well. So, as we took a look at those five properties, again, So as we took a look at those five properties, again, and I'm going to refer to them, the properties by the name of the school that had been previously on that land, Adams, Hull, Jefferson, Old Webster, and Wilson. Again, those are five of about a dozen properties that are owned by the school district. And one of the things that we had had some dialogue about was the maintenance of that land in those properties, and balancing that with feedback we'd received in community forums in the past from our community that talked about balancing the needs of our school district that we currently have, and utilizing dollars from the sale of property, whether that's a one-time expenditure or, when needed previously as part of our general fund to bolster when the district was going through some very difficult financial times. We currently have a school board policy that states, if there is a sale of property and we choose to transfer the ownership of that, that the proceeds of that property, if the district's fund balance is within the MSBO recommended guidelines, those dollars would go into the capital projects fund. If the current fund balance of the district is less than the recommended fund balance, then those dollars, the board has the option to place those dollars either in the capital projects fund or in the general fund. So just as a reminder, where we currently stand now, and we know that the process of any sale of property can take anywhere from one to two years to go through as a complete process. But where we currently stand, our district fund balance is within the recommended MSBO guidelines of fifteen to twenty percent. And so those dollars, as currently following our board policy, would go into a capital projects fund. And I bring that up because some of the discussion I know that we've had previously, and I'm sure you may have this evening, is a desire to look carefully at any revenue that comes in via the sale of property, as clearly understanding that that's a one-time revenue. Therefore, it may, it should best be commensurate with a one-time expenditure, as opposed to something to count, that you would need to count on annually. Because once that property is sold and that those dollars come in, there's only one opportunity to utilize those dollars going out. So again, that's where we would currently stand, and we had some extended discussion over the past number of months as we've taken a look at this report, on whether or not the board would like to consider the sale of property. And as our administrative team looked at it, we believe that continued judicious review of this, including the consideration of sale of property of one or two properties, is an appropriate consideration, both for the needs that exist within our capital projects and also to balance out the maintenance of a significant number of properties across our district, so.
And thank you for bringing that up, because that is an important piece, too. And we're maintaining these properties. If you hold on to them, we're the ones that are responsible for them. And if there's a building on a property and it's vacant, that also causes other concerns. So thank you.
So we opened it up to you for some dialogue on the properties and where the board would direct our administrative team to move forward or not based on this information.
Okay. Who wants to get started?
I will.
Ms. Burton.
I appreciate our conversation that we had in our study session about this. Just for the benefit of our public, these are not the only, again, as you said, Mr. Francis, these are not our only five vacant properties or currently, properties that are currently unused for our education purposes. But these are the properties that have potential financial value to the district and could have residential value to our community. Looking at these properties, I am in favor of probably putting two on the market at this point. I would rather do, if we're looking at two, I would rather do two at the same time, as opposed to doing one now and one in a couple of years. One of the main reasons for that with me is that the market is so strong right now. We don't know for sure, nobody knows for sure, what the market will be like in a few years. But conversation nationally is that the market could go down, and we know these things are cyclical. If the market is strong right now, if the housing need in Lavonia is strong right now, I'm in favor of putting two on the market as opposed to one. As we fully realize by telephone calls and emails every spring, when it rains a lot and the grass grows a lot, as you just mentioned, these are properties that we are responsible for caring for. And we are a public school district, not a real estate holding company. We are responsible as Board of Education for making sure that we take care of and keep properties that could be used for current or future educational use. Mrs. Oakwist, when you refer to our policy, that is the meat of that policy that applies to tonight's discussion. Does this property have current or future educational use? These buildings were built in the nineteen sixties and seventies, oh, some of them in the fifties, you're right. And families were just having more children than they do now. They were having three, four, five kids, where now families are having zero, one, two kids. So we're still basically working with the existing properties that were, that we needed when families were much, much larger. They just aren't now. And from everything we have seen historically, I don't foresee it going back to a time when families are having three, four, five kids in our community where we're going to need all of these properties to build schools on again. For these reasons, I'm in favor of putting two of these properties on the market, knowing that we still are holding several other pieces of property. Should they be needed in the future, even though I don't foresee that right now? And if we're going to put, if we're looking at these five, I would rather do two than one, bring in some more money to the school district, utilize that for some capital projects that we need, because we don't need all of this extra land. And we said, as we said, our community does need housing. We are very, very blessed to have a community that has very stable infrastructure, very stable taxes, and therefore our folks, when their children graduate from school, they tend to stay in their homes. And therefore, there are fewer turnovers of houses for folks that would like to move into our community. This would also allow for a little bit more of that. So I would, I would like to look at further, putting two of these pieces on the market and discussing which two that may be with the board.
Ms. Burton. I agree with Mrs. Burton. I think it's a judicious way to proceed. I think that, you know, we contracted with Mr. Bowman to do this in the survey, and I think that it is a well-laid-out survey with a lot of detail on it, and so I think that we need to utilize it and act on it, as opposed to, like Mrs. Burton said, do it again in another year, or another two years, you know, have him recreate this and do this document over. I think that he did a very thorough review of all of our properties to give us great information. And again, in two years, it might not be relevant. So I think the time to act is now to do this. And even putting the money in the capital projects fund, I think we did just do, you know, we just touched about a lot of the projects that we did for the bond, but the bond didn't touch every building. So we still do have buildings that, there was a time when the bond was done, that we were touching every, every school. And, but there were several buildings that were not touched. And so I think there is still a lot of need out there, although we just did a lot of work. There is still a lot of need out there that we could utilize this money for, and that it would be well-spent, as opposed to, you know, grassland sitting there. So I think that it's, again, like Mrs. Burton said, really wise to do this now, whenever we have this information and as he has advised, the market is ready right now.
Ms. Brever.
I agree with both Mrs. Burton and Mrs. Frank, that the timing is right probably to sell property, and I would also be in favor of choosing two properties to sell. I think the timing is essential and would be, it would be judicious for us to do, to take a look at selling a couple of those properties.
Great. Mr. Bunkfield.
So I am in favor of selling property if we choose to put the money, and I, remind me, once we're over that limit, we don't have a choice, right? Our policy says it has to go in capital.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and I think that's one of the things, again, with jumping in and selling at least two of the properties, is that in the past, we've been very judicious about how and when we've sold the properties, because it has been a one-time revenue, and we had to be very careful about making sure that we didn't wind up with a huge lump sum of money and then not be able to match that in future years with legacy costs. I actually, I think that there's a third piece of property on here, that if we're going to jump in and do this, that I'd like to, there's a couple of the smaller ones that we're talking about, or maybe one of the smaller ones that are very labor-intensive, I would be in favor of looking at those, too. But they're small and have probably, we may not even be able to get them to move, you know? So.
Well, moving on from that, I think we should discuss what properties ultimately would be considered. I want to throw one out there, and that is the Old Webster Elementary School, Ain Castle Gardens subdivision. And here are people's thoughts on that one to begin with. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. A couple of things. One, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that when you sell property, you're trading one asset for another. The one asset isn't liquid, the other one is. So I take that into consideration. I also remember the community forums that we had, that was almost overwhelming that people talked about sale of property. You've got all this excess property, you're not utilizing it, why isn't the school district doing something with those? So I keep that in the back of my mind when I start to think about these. And I, one of the notes that I had down here was locations, which ones? And I think we have to look at which, which are the most judicious and which are the most, what I would term valuable in terms of acquiring students. And I think if you look at two of the properties, that I look at as meeting that criteria would be perhaps the Adams property and, as Mr. Sanders said, the Old Webster. I think those two are in locations that are prime for construction and an influx of residential building and perhaps to acquire the children. I just, I know both of those locations quite well, and I think right now, that would be the areas that I would think would be the best for, for the development. And I, too, think if we're going to do it for the economy scale, do more than one. Do at least two properties, and, you know, then you, you still have some sort of in the bank, until later down the road, see what happens with these, and go from there.
Yeah, I like your thoughts. I think that both are, are areas that could use some fresh housing stock. The community would welcome that. I hear feedback that, all over, that people are looking for some fresh, fresh housing, and they're in kind of two, two locations where a lot of younger families especially move into, I've noticed. So I think those are great suggestions. Mrs. Frank.
Because the Old Webster's in the Church Triad, correct?
Correct.
And then Adams would be in the?
Franklin.
Franklin. So I think that we just did the Clay property, which is in the Stevenson Triad. So I think that this is a really great option to add a, add a?
Good point.
A property in each triad. And so I think that that is really, you know, we've touched the north side. I think, is this correct, they would both be kind of on each sides of Lavonia. And so I think, actually, it's really judicious to start with those two, to be able to really spread it out and give some new growth into each of the triads.
Really good point.
Mrs. Burton.
I could support both of those properties. I think they've both had, seen some recent construction in the areas of those properties with non-school construction that was going on. I like the idea that it's on opposite sides of the city, so we're bringing in some housing stock on both sides. And these are among two of our largest properties. And Adams is, is the largest property on the list that we're looking at right now. And between Hull and Old Webster, they're very, very close in size, but I could support both those properties, the Adams/Paranville property and the Old Webster property.
Mrs. Bunkfield.
I know one of the things that we brought up when we talked about was concerns about whether or not the schools could manage the influx of students, and I believe we determined that there has to be more than a couple of kids in every single one of those houses in order to, yeah.
And plus.
We could only, we could only hope.
Ten in each house.
Yeah, ten in each house. So I think if that's a question for anybody, that, that has been a consideration, we've taken that into consideration. And as it stands, it's going to be good for those, those buildings that are going to be impacted and are not going to cause an overflow of students.
If that were the case, that'd be a great problem.
It would be a amazing problem.
Perhaps we could just do a survey, whoever wants to buy the house again. What are their plans for children? No, no, you can't.
Mrs. Oakwist.
So in the past, as we've taken a look at sale of property, one of the things that I know the board felt strongly about was that it be marketed toward residential development. And so I just wanted to spend a few minutes touching on that item, because I think that was something that was important to our board. Certainly, it would be the recommendation of our administration, so we would not be looking at, I'm assuming, any type of retail or any type of sale other than residential development. I just want to get some feedback from the board on that direction, because one of the things, you know, Mr. Johnson just mentioned, as well as a few other board members, is that a positive byproduct of this is the ability to continue to look for ways to retain and attract students, and the importance of balancing our enrollment. And so just wanted to open that up for some dialogue with regard to the focus for any development of vacant land.
Ms. Burton. Thank you for that, because I think, I'm not saying for everyone, but we all were thinking that. So thank you for bringing that up, as we were talking about the triads, for, for students coming in. So I think we were all thinking that, but thank you for bringing that to the attention, because I think that that's important for our community to know that that's what our thought and our intent before we sell anything, is that our intent is for residential.
Mr. Johnson.
Well, I think when, when you actually look at the areas, and I don't presume to speak for the city, but I don't think anything other than residential development would be appropriate in either of those. I mean, if they're all residential landlocked, so to speak, and I think it would be very difficult for someone to attempt a rezoning to any type of commercial development in those. But that's, is my opinion, so.
Mrs. Burton.
And also, while zoning is up to the city, not the school board, I will read one, one sentence of our policy. In any event, the board reserves in its sole and absolute discretion the right to accept or reject any and all offers. So it's, we can make it very clear that it is our intention that this be, be used for residential use. And I agree, I can't see the city selecting anything other than residential use based on the locations of these properties and the fact that it's surrounded by residential. If they're not on major intersections, they're not on corners, they're not in anything that would be logical for anything other than residential.
I agree with you. I think these properties in and of themselves will attract residential builders, is what it's going to attract, much like Clay did and the others.
So I know you've mentioned this, but I think it bears repeating, that we maintain a significant number of properties in addition to these. So while we, this study took a look at five pieces of property, there were some pieces for which the board did not even want to consider looking at valuation. So no matter how valuable, for instance, the former Bryant property or the former Dickinson property, et cetera, there are a number of properties. So if one of the questions that may, that you may, you may get is, what if in the future we would need to build a new school or a new, some type of new center? And certainly, we retain many, many, many pieces of property in addition to the five on which the board received this report. So, you know, many, many years ago, in, way back in the day, we had thirty-six elementary schools. And so as we know, that, that has decreased over time, as you think about where we are now, which is really about a third of that. And so that has left us, you know, gratefully with many, many wonderful pieces of land that have been utilized throughout our community for a wide variety of purposes. And we certainly retain some of those with facilities on them that are, that are leased out to members of our community and provide a really valuable source. that are leased out to members of our community and provide a really valuable service as well. So there's a wide variety from vacant properties that really have very little value, vacant properties that have much more value, properties on which we still have a school facility or building that may be leased out. So that exists in that report that Mr. Francis compiled last year in addition to this, that shared with you all of the properties that are owned and how they're currently being used.
Any other comments, questions?
Can we talk about the Wilson and the Jefferson properties, or are we not? Are those not up for discussion?
Go ahead.
I mean, I think everybody, well, okay, it, it sounds like we have a consensus on Old Webster and Adams. But we have not, unless everybody is completely opposed.
Well, feel free to share your thoughts.
Um, well, I think, and the Wilson property is the one that's adjacent to, ish to Emerson, and it has the water tower.
It's, yeah, it's not, it's east of it, but it's not adjacent to it, does not share a property line. There is something in between.
And there's really not anything that backs up to that property that's, I mean, there's a swim, swim club or something, but the, the property really is
Right.
really is vacant, right? There's not, it's not thought of as a park in any manner.
Just open land.
Just, but, so pretty much, with the market, if there's a potential to sell that, with the market being potentially still remaining pretty vibrant, my opinion is, is if it's gonna sell, it, you know, this is an opportune time to at least put it out there. Now, that does, that means that if we don't get an appropriate offer on it, that we're not just gonna, you know, oh yeah, whatever, and we're gonna get rid of it. But I, I think it'd be worth throwing it out there to get some offers on it and see what, what that piece of property. It sounds like, you know, there's some issues with that piece of property with, you know, keeping it mowed and I know it's not a huge piece of property, and the other thing is, is the money's gonna go into the capital, the capital improvement fund. And so it's, that money can sit there for potentially quite a while. It's not like we're raising a bunch of money to go and, and just dump it into whatever it is. It can sit there and we can hang on to it for a while, where the property is just gonna sit.
Mrs. Brereton?
Thank you. Does that Wilson property, do we do a lot of mowing there? Is that just all land where we don't have to maintain? Is there any property that we don't have to mow?
No, we mow.
No, we maintain it.
We maintain it.
Okay, so all of these properties, we do must mow. It's not, that's not a, Wilson isn't a property that you can leave to grow?
No, it's not like a wetland or something like that. No, it's, it's a piece of, now, there are some drainage issues on, on that. So in the height of the rainy season and spring, there's a section that we have trouble with.
Did you get complaints from families on that Wilson property, or it's not really around housing enough for?
It is around, I mean, it, it's across the street.
Across the street.
On Webster is all housing.
That's not one of which I was contacted, I don't know, Mr. Francis, was that's not one?
You know what I mean? I'm just wondering if that was one of those properties.
There's not a ball diamond on it or anything like that. Jefferson has the ball diamonds near there and whatnot, and so that, that becomes more of a question, because people utilize it for, for things.
Could, and I, I don't have my folder with me. That property could be zoned, that was an R, R1 zone?
So that is totally in the purview of the city.
Gotcha.
That's totally in the purview of the city. It's currently zoned for public facilities.
Gotcha.
So they, it would need to be rezoned residential, and then the zoning commission would make the recommendation with regard to whether or not it's like an R1, R2, or R3.
And that's the same as
For any of those pieces.
Oh, they're all still public.
Before we, oh, sorry, before we go further, I, I think for me personally, it sounds like we do have consensus on two properties. My personal thoughts are that, you know, this is a slow process of us evaluating our, our landed properties. For me personally, I think I would be reluctant to go beyond two properties at this time, but I would like to hear if, you know, others' thoughts on that, you know, before we kind of go into nitty-gritty of if we're gonna, you know, seriously consider the other ones. You know, for me ultimately, you know, there's, the market is hot, but also, you know, this is not a fire sale. We're, we're doing this thoughtfully and with intent. So my, my feelings are that two is kind of my personal comfort level, but, you know, if anyone else would like to share thoughts on that. Mrs. Brereton?
I feel comfortable with two. I, I kind of agree. To go into a third property, people might, community might say, you know, what are you doing? Why are you selling all these, this land? And I do think we have to be careful. We do wanna save a lot of our property. We don't wanna sell it right away. I think selling two plots of land is probably for me the safest bet, in my opinion.
Anyone else? Mrs. Jarvis?
I agree that selling two properties and, and these two that we've been discussing is a pretty safe move. I just want to throw out there that if the market is hot, that is a time that we can potentially sell a, a piece of property that would otherwise be difficult to sell or tricky to sell, or have some certain characteristics that might not be easy to sell in a slower market. So maybe something like Wilson that does have drainage issues that would have to be addressed. Might be better to move in a hot market than in a slow one.
Mrs. Frank?
I agree with that. I, again, I do think we have a lot of capital needs on the properties that we have, that we have K-12 students and that we are, we are currently engaged in, and we have staff and students that we are trying to teach. And so I, I do think we need to invest in our, in the future and what we have now. I don't know exactly, can, if, if we, if somebody does come to you and say, hey, there's a piece of property, we, that can always come back to the board and, and, and say, you know, off, on a one-off, because we know that that is a more difficult piece. It's not like, can we sell that way? Or do we have to always put it out for, for bid?
Yes, in fact, I'll, I'll take that right from our, right from our policy. It says, "The board will analyze any unsolicited or solicited requests for the sale and permanent disposition of real property to determine whether or not there is an interest for the district to sell or dispossess assets." In which case, at that point, you would need to, we would need to require an independent appraisal or broker's opinion of value. We do have a broker's opinion of value
Right.
on it, but probably would want a current one if that were not a property currently.
Right.
So i- if your question is on anything that is within the district's purview, the board would have the right to review that, that interest for any property, yes.
So I think for this one, it, I, I feel differently about this one than I would like a Hall, where we have community that is there that uses that park, that is, is very invested in that park. So I feel differently about this one if, if the board is directed to, to add it there. And then if we decide not to do it, I, I think that that's an okay option. I'm okay also just going with the two. But I, I, I think that this one might be an okay one, but I, I definitely would not say, you know, three that we're actually gonna build and we're gonna do, do houses on and that sort of thing. I think that especially something like the Hall, Hall building that is really actively used by the community, I think that we need to keep, to keep those type of things and not sell three, three active properties in terms of, of being utilized for houses, where I can come down from.
Mr. Johnson?
I guess from my standpoint, it's almost a perception issue. If you, you know, two or three, I, I think if you, you throw a third in there, it sort of does look like a fire sale. The other issue that, that you may have with that is, is Mr. Francis indicated, there's some drainage issues over there, and a developer, I think, is gonna look at that. They obviously analyze what their infrastructure is gonna cost them. And because of that, a developer may be less likely to wanna pay top dollar, because they're gonna analyze, what's my return gonna be? And if my infrastructure cost is going to be higher, then he does one of two things. He either doesn't develop it, or he tries to pass that on. And obviously, that, that would be a developer's risk, but with that drainage issue, I think there may be some, some problems with that. I'm comfortable with two. I just don't like the perception of, you know, here we are, we're selling all of our properties at one time. That's my input.
Mrs. Brereton?
I'm comfortable with the two properties. Again, I like the fact that they're, as Mrs. Frank said, in two different triads of ours. Mrs. Bonfield, I think, brings a, a good point to the table with, with some of these other properties. I think what I'm most comfortable with right now is going forward on the two properties, but in one to two years revisiting this list again and taking a look at that time to see, is it time to make a next step on some of these properties, or is it not? We have sold some of our properties in recent years, and I'm comfortable with those decisions that we've made. These are two decently sized properties. And, and I like the fact that they are decently sized properties. If we're looking at taking the next step at some of, you know, one to two smaller properties in another year or two, I'm openly having that discussion, but I think, my gut says I'm most comfortable right now with, with going with the two larger properties and, and that's Ryan.
Mrs. Burt?
Can I make one more pitch for Wilson? So, and Mr. John, President Johnson is spot on with the cost of the infrastructure and receiving top dollar. My argument to that would be it's gonna cost the same amount to produce the infrastructure for that property, no matter when we sell that property. What the builders are gonna look for is how long that they have to hold that property and how much they're gonna be able to sell those houses for. So in a slow hu- housing market, if they have to take a construction loan out to purchase that property and then hold it for what during the recession was a, a very long time and have to pay interest on not only the property, but if they produce the infrastructure, the construction loan on that, and that's why a lot of the builders lost a lot of properties during the recession is simply because they couldn't, they couldn't even pay the construction loan interest. So being that the, the infrastructure cost is gonna cost about the same, if the, from a construction standpoint, if they can flip that property relatively quickly and get what may be considered top dollar for those houses, that then they're gonna be more willing to take on a challenging piece of property in a hot market rather than waiting for two or three years when, and we don't have a crystal ball. We could hold on to it in five years, the market, because we're holding on to it. I agree. There'll be less, even less property in Livonia, and then maybe it becomes more desirable. But for the market right now and the, that we have issues with that property, that it's, it's difficult to maintain, we have some drainage issues on it, I would really like to see us at least put it out on the mar- it doesn't mean it's gonna sell. It doesn't mean we're gonna get any bids on it. We could get some bids on it, and they could go in and do some due diligence on it and decide that it isn't worth trying to put the infrastructure in. And, you know, and, and that's part of what happens. We don't have to, just because we put it on the market doesn't mean that we have to sell it. But we are never gonna get, I don't know what we consider top dollar on, you know, it's not gonna go for the same, it's not as desirable as a property as say, like the Old Webster property. But it is something that we know with pretty good certainty we will never want to use that property for anything. And there isn't really any current, as, as Mrs. Frank pointed out, there's really not any current community activity on that property, where we have parks or ball diamonds or a lot of recreation on it. So the, the impact to the community of letting that piece of property go, I think is gonna be pretty small. And so that's my last pitch. I'm not gonna, I know you guys have comfort levels and I'm, I'm jumping off the cliff, so. But at any rate, so that's my pitch for getting rid of Wilson.
The only other thing I just wanted to add was, Phil, how much does it cost you and your team to maintain that property? And I think that that's a piece we need to look at. Not saying that we need to, I'm not asking for a number, but I'm just saying if it does have poor drainage, it's hard for us to get in there, we get our mower stuck, that sort of thing. I'm not asking that, but I think, I think it's something that we need to look at as how much is it costing us to maintain it, not only what the property is worth, but how much is coming out of our general fund dollars to maintain that property and when we're thinking about it.
We have to remember that we only have so many ti- part of that cost, though, is human resources, as well as financial resources. So we only have so many mowers and so many people, and, and I agree, looking at the cost, but I caution us to go on, how much does it cost us to run, you know, put three, three dollars worth of gas in a lawnmower? Not a whole lot.
Right, right.
But when we have people calling us that there are a lot of other properties that the grass is waist-high and they need it mowed, and we're out trying to get our mowers unstuck out of the Wilson property when we could be mowing something that's a little more desirable to mow that, you know, so, I mean, it, it's not necessarily just the dollar issue.
And I'm not asking for a dollar. I was just bringing that up.
No, 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 but, but we have to remember
Mrs. Jarvis has been waiting.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to build on that, because it is really having these vacant properties that we have to spend so much time, personnel time, machinery time, equipment time, is actually turning these properties into more reliability than an asset. We have so much vacant land that should the need arise that we would ever need another building, which would be a wonderful thing, we still have plenty of land to do that. And if we were to sell these properties, we would be turning a liability into an asset and putting those dollars into our capital fund. It means that when we have a need, like building another building or maintaining a building that was not touched from the fund, or the, from the bond fund, that we don't have to go into the general fund to do that. And that's huge, because buildings will always need maintenance. And if we can take those dollars from a place that's not the classroom, then it behooves us to do it that way.
The only
Yeah, Mrs. Jarvis?
The only comment I would have to that, if, if that were your deciding factor, then we sell all the properties, because it eliminates all of our maintenance. And I don't think we want to do that.
Right, right.
Okay, absolutely not. Agreed.
I don't, I don't think that behooves us. I think that's relatively short-sighted. So although I, I acknowledge that it's, it's certainly one of the factors, it, it can't be a deciding factor.
I'm not suggesting we sell all.
No.
I was hoping you were.
No, but I, I think one of the reasons we picked the Wilson property to go and look at was because it was definitely on the list of, can we afford to let it? Not financially, but land-wise, can we let it go? If it was one that was really desirable, or, you know, we were really, and not to say, I'm gonna get myself in trouble with making people think that I don't think other things are important, but I do. I'm just saying, Wilson is kind of like the Perronville Island. It's like, you know.
So if we can't sell it when it's easy, we'll never sell it when it's hard.
Well, yeah.
So, and to me, it sounds like we certainly have consensus on two properties and, and a question about another, so. Go ahead, what's your thought?
So I just wanted to get a, a direction as we, as, as we, it sounds as though, and you just, you know, you did rep that, that up well, that it, it sounds like you'd like us to proceed and have Mr. Francis go through the process that we have previously with preparing a request for proposal document for you to review with regard to at least two of those properties. If the board would like to take some time and continue to do some thinking about that, we can certainly revisit this at our next study session. This, it, it takes a bit of time to prepare those documents and to go through that, that process. So certainly, it is not as though, you know, the door is shut tonight if that's something the board wants to consider. And it sounds like there's some varied opinion around that. And so what we can do is start to prepare requests for proposals. Again, the board does not have to move forward with that. Once we receive proposals back, they may choose to do that, you know, as you know, you may not. But that process does take many weeks and then ultimately many months. And so if, it, it sounds like we have direction from you to per- And so, if, it, it sounds like we have direction from you to proceed with preparing that on two of the properties, in which case, we would work with the same folks we did previously to prepare those documents and get those out. That may elicit some other inquiries and questions with regard to some of these other pieces, and that may help provide some additional background for the board with regard to what folks may be interested in or taking a look at. Because certainly, you know, developers are often aware of, you know, what is owned by the city, what is owned privately, what is owned by the school district, and as we know, you know, we've had some good fortune for the city to be recognized as a very desirable area for families and for housing developments. And so, that in and of itself, has brought a number of calls into, into the district and into our offices with regard to, you know, what, what may come of the future. And so, I think it's appropriate that the board has the opportunity to take a look at this, and to take a look at any proposals that come forward, and I'll put this back on for the next study session as well, to further the dialogue on, on the remaining question in front of us.
Just for scheduling sake, I guess, to, to say, talking with Mr. Bowman, we would, there's, there's a window, and then it closes, and then it opens back up again, simply because you're not going to put up for proposals in, in November and December. We would want by the end of October, because then it gives you the November time. Once you get to December, it's end of the, the calendar year, and, and a lot of the holiday time, it sort of shuts back down. So, that doesn't, it's neither here nor there, with, we can always have RFPs done, if we don't make the, the earlier time, we just hold them and put them out in the new year, or we put them out for an eight-week timeline, and they just roll through the holiday period. But I just wanted to give you guys the, you know, that, that information too, on, on timing.
So, you're saying that we could potentially prepare RFPs and have them in by the end of October?
Right, if we can get them done, talking to Billy, you know, we, and what I'm hearing tonight is, go start the process, which, which makes a difference between that, and let's come back in the October meeting and talk again, which would probably not, you know, not make it for the fall, would make it for into the winter. So, I'll start the process, and, and we'll see where we're at, and of course, with reviewing those RFPs, et cetera, where we land, we land, but I'll get the ball rolling.
One more comment, Mrs. Oakley. Yes. So, I guess, with that timing, it's either, it's probably we're going to move forward with these two, and then come back and, and possibly do the, the third one later. Would that be your recommendation, Mrs. Oakley, that we do these two, continue with these two, and come back to a study session? Or if we're going to do, if we're going to ultimately, in six months, decide to do three, to do them all, I mean, what is your recommendation? I guess I'm asking.
Just hearing this information from Mr. Francis with regard to the window, I think it would be appropriate for this fall to, we, again, had we not just gone through this process and, and saw that at least in one of the cases, it was an almost 24-month process to complete from beginning to end, I think it would be appropriate to at least put out for RFP, these initial pieces to look at by, by the end of October. And then if the board chooses to do so, once we get to the, the first of the year, we could certainly add on, you know, the, the other option.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item D, that is the bid specs for raising of Perrinville and former Adams School.
Thank you. I want to update the board. We spoke briefly at the study session last week. We, we did put out for bid, the raising of, of Ems slash Perrinville, Linden between Hinkster and Middlebelt. We did receive six bids. We don't have the documentation ready for the meeting to vote next week, because I couldn't get that information in your packet. We just did the post-bid interviews, like, today, so, there's, there's no good way to, to, yeah, sorry, we were slacking. So, there, I didn't want to rush that process, because when it comes down to it, raising a building in the winter months is, is more desirable anyway, so, it's okay if we just hold off and bring it back to you in October. So, what we'll do is we'll, we'll swing back to this and put it on the October meetings. Yes?
I'm just curious, how long has that building been empty?
Since 15, Mrs. Oakley, does that sound right? Adams has been in Perrinville since 1415? So, that was last year it was open, was 1415, right? Or is?
Hold on, I have it here.
I think, I think.
Yes, and it was, the termination was made in, in spring of 15, yeah.
Yes, yes. And so, as a building, you, by the state, you couldn't go back in without completely gutting it, bringing it up to, fully to, to modern code.
Are we going to bring it, do you want to take it to a study session, or another committee of the whole? Are we going to take it right into October?
I, I would want to bring it to the October committee, so you could see the bid results and the recommendation.
Okay.
I don't know that you need a study session, we've talked about it a couple of times, you know it's coming.
Okay, so, we're going to, definitely needs to go the next committee.
Committee, please.
All right. Item E is the K-6 walking pass, 2013 bond, playgrounds.
Yes. As part of the playground committee, the playground committee, back when we had the 2013 bond funds for renovations on playgrounds, one of the ideas was to have walking paths at the K-6 buildings. Some already have, as an example, Cooper already has one, it was sort of the model pool we were looking at. So, we're, we have come back and put that bid out, we have bid results for you, and in your packet, you do see we had two, two respondents, and the recommended low bidder is best asphalt. They do quite a bit of work in, in the district throughout of Romulus, at $175,110. So, just to be clear on, on what we're talking about here, walking paths, not, not a high school track, we're not building that. We're talking about also not necessarily a full-on oval, or something like that, at a school. We're, we're talking about the ability to connect what might be already at a, a playground area. For example, asphalt paths are, are around much of our playground areas. We want to connect some of those to make a walking path area for students. And we've done this, and the committee had reached out to all of the buildings, gave them a, a satellite overhead photo of their building, said, please, mark out where you would want your path, and, and then we counseled them on, you know, you don't necessarily have to take it out here and draw an oval, because everybody thinks of a track. We were calling them tracks at first, and that got to be confusing. So, we've turned it into walking paths, and the buildings did a very nice job. Generally, it was principals and PE teachers, and folks that work with, doing recess duty, et cetera. And we're, we're going to take what we have, connect them, make a walking path area, and we make sure that it's still within, and we've asked, make sure you can still see the students from your playground as best as possible. We didn't want, you just have a playground here, and say, well, I've got all this nice land on the other side of the building, and do a path over there where you no longer have, have control. So, overall, it, it's, it's not easy to say we're going to spend X at every building. It's really going to be, you know, more at one building, less at another. All the specs were given in, in the bid, and best came in at, at, at the low number. So, we're recommending them to move forward. This is out of 2013 bond, again, as a continuation of the, the bond work and playgrounds.
Mrs. Bradford.
Okay, so, on the walking paths, they're asphalt, are those going to, are the maintenance crews going to have to plow those in the wintertime, or are those something that we would just let those go? Or how will that work?
The asphalt paths are there, we're not adding any asphalt. So, there are, we're saying they're already there, we would connect them with the path.
They actually be a crushed gravel?
Yes, this is going to be.
A crushed gravel. They will not be asphalt.
No, no.
They will just be a crushed gravel.
No, that makes a big difference.
Did I not say that?
Nobody doing it!
No, no.
Just to clarify, it will not be blacktop, it will not be asphalt.
Thank you, I just, oh, I was thinking, you know, that's a lot of.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
They, they do all types of.
They do gravel.
Okay, so, this would just be maintained by itself, it doesn't have to.
Yes, they would clear the area out, and, and then fill it in with the crushed gravel. I think some saw pictures of a small portion over at Hoover that was, was done.
Well, I did, and I saw it was, it was gravel, but then I, when you said asphalt, I was assuming they were going to make an asphalt path.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The board's going to go on shovel.
I'm brilliant, I know. Just kidding.
Mr. Johnson first.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the board is going to have to go on shovel, we're not going to plow, we're going to shovel.
Mrs. Burton.
I understand that these are going to look different, probably, at each one of our buildings. Is it designed so that there's going to be a loop, so it can be a continuous path at each one of our buildings? Or are, at some, is it going to be one, you know, you go to, to the end, and you turn around, and you can come back?
No, it, it, and that was the point of it, was to try to make a, if it is a connector, it's a connector to make it a, a path that can be a loop. Now, it may not be, like I said, an oval, it might be.
Square.
Absolutely, I don't have a problem with that, right, exactly. And the idea, one of, one of the ideas, as I remember behind this, is that some of our youngsters at, at recess time would like to be walking. They may not want to be on the swing set, or, you know, other pieces of equipment, but, but that may be a fun and certainly healthy recess activity.
This can be used in, in multiple ways. I, I know that, just going back in time, when Cooper got theirs, the principal there would walk a student, when the student was maybe having a bad day, if you will, and walk and talk with the student. And, so, it, it's just going to be, but the original idea is also at the playground, and, and as we move forward, PTAs like to sometimes add things to playgrounds, et cetera. The idea from the committee was, this would be a nice spot to perhaps then put a, a bench, or even a, a, a small piece of equipment, so it's along the walking path.
Like a fitness path.
Yeah, so, so it would, it would give it room to.
For a walking club and.
Yeah, it would give it room to grow in, in, in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on to item.
We're voting.
Yes, please, please.
Really quick, Mr. Francis, I know they're not, they're all different, but they're all, not equal, but equitable, correct?
Correct.
Like, one's not getting a mile path, and one's getting a quarter, I mean, there's different.
So, the, the length is going to definitely vary by property.
Right, but not.
I mean, I can tell you that, that none of them are going to look the same.
Right.
And none of them are going to be the same in, in length, and probably even in shape most of the time.
Yeah.
But, like you said, I like the actual, because we, we do have playgrounds at elementary schools that look very different with regard to where they're located. You have two very separate playgrounds at one K-4 and another K-4, they're right next to each other. So, it has to just look differently for management purposes as well.
Thank you.
All right. Item F is bulk salt purchase.
Okay, I know this is the one, you've all been, that's why.
Left it for last.
It's a cleanup hitter.
Yes.
I don't even know what to say about it anymore, it's just that it's been built up way too much.
In January, we will really appreciate our bulk salt. Right now, we're kind of giving it a hard time.
So, just to give you a little back, I mean, we've done this, and, and, and the numbers are, are here, we're proposing a 1,700-ton purchase from the MyDeal Purchase Consortium, as in past years. There's a requirement to purchase 80% of what we think we would get, so we say 1,700. We can go another 30% over that, still at the contract rate. I'll give you a quick reminder that last year, when we had a horrific winter, between the cold and the snow and everything else, and we were using quite a bit of salt, we, Mr. Lau went out into a local company just to say, how much would a ton of salt be? And it was incredibly higher than what we were paying, just to sort of test the waters and see what it was. So, because it is very much a supply-demand type of market, you know, when, when, when it's a very mild winter, there's, there's high supply, low demand, costs come down. We went through a winter that was a, a high, high-demand winter. So, anyway, you have the numbers on, on there. We, we have a shed outside that holds about, about 400-ish tons, so, so we always keep that loaded up. So, at the end of the day, we really have access to about, if we purchased all 1,700, we'd have access to about, you know, 2,100, 20, you know, so, give or take what's in the shed. If we need to buy more, we still could. So, we, this is sort of how we do it annually, based on, on use.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Mr. Francis, I notice you have several years' worth of self-purchases here, and in every year, we've purchased more than we needed, which is better than running out. But when you say that we've used so much, is that inclusive of the salt that we did not use the year before, or is that just from that year's purchase?
Correct, we, we use, because we'll, so like, right now, just as an example, we, we have about 400 in the shed. And so, we're, we're ordering up 1,700, but we may not actually buy the 1,700, because remember, we, we were only required to buy 80% of it. So, yeah, we, when it's all said and done, we'll say, okay, well, what did we buy last year? Oh, instead of, we bought 1,500, but hold on, we had about 400 in the shed, so we'll call it 1,900 at the end of the year.
So, the 1,500 that we used last year, the first 300 of it were the leftover?
Sure, we have a few, we, we have some that's in there, correct. And we always want to have some in the shed, because, and I'm going to say this very much, that's not going to happen, but it could snow tomorrow, and we'd have some.
Quite too tough.
Yeah. So, we also want, there's, there's a section in my memo that I point out in the, in the second paragraph about the decrease in the cost per ton. So, we have the cost of 52.38 per ton, and the total on that is 89.046, and it's a decrease of 8.86 per ton from last year. The year prior, if you, I went back to the old memo, it had actually increased for, for 2018, so it's come back down again. Interestingly enough, after a, a pretty big winter. Any other questions? That was probably everyone's fun for the evening.
Just, so, I understand, Phil, we actually get as much as we purchase, even though, but it may carry over to the, to the next year? In other words, if we're purchasing this year 17 tons of salt, and there may be 400 in the shed.
But we don't have to purchase 1700.
We're only required to purchase 13.
We only have to, yeah, we don't have to buy, buy 1700.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, we only have to buy 80% of it.
You're approving for us to purchase up to 1,700, and the company requires us to purchase 80% of that, which in this case would be a little over 1,300.
So, so we can go under.
So, we're stuck with 80% regardless.
Right, right.
Up to 1,700.
So, and we, and if it's a, if we have a higher need, we also at the same price can go more.
Up to 30% more.
30% more.
Got you.
So, we have a nice range in there, at this locked-in price is the point.
And this is ready to go in this week, right?
Please.
Yep.
Very important.
That concludes building insight.
Take care, everybody.
I hope we don't need to. Salt is done.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. That takes us to our policy committee. Mrs. Burton.
Thank you, and we will have two of our folks, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Archibald, help us through our policy. We have been working through our policy book, and I, again, I thank our cabinet folks, because I'm a policy geek. I like it updated and current, and not saying 1988, even though we've looked at it, I like it having some kind of a current date on it. But seriously, it is important that our policies be up-to-date and relevant and current, and in keeping with our, with our practices. And often, and it's going to be reflected in several of these, it's going to be a matter of bringing our, our language up to date, and so that our language flows comfortably, without changing a whole lot of the content of, of our policies. So, I'll turn it over to you folks.
Thank you. Mrs. Burton, again, good evening. I'll bring to you these policies tonight. As you recall, we discussed them at the previous study session and reviewed the edits, so the changes that we talked about at the study session are before you tonight. The first policy is Policy GA, under the General Personnel Section. And in the first paragraph here, this, this policy really just got a refresher, and replaced the word philosophy with our shared vision and collective commitments, as those represent the guidepost for, for our beliefs and our actions as a district. And we incorporated the word priorities to go along with our goals. And again, that this is really, sort of just speaking the, the language that represents the, the bedrock of, of, of what we're about here in the district, so. Any questions on GA?
Questions?
First reading, these are all first readings.
Yep, this will be our first reading, yes.
The next one is Personnel Records, Board Policy GAK, and we are recommending the deletion of this policy, in that the access to personnel files, in addition to being in the master agreements, is covered in the Board-Polite Rights to Know Act, and isn't, isn't really necessary to have in a, in a policy.
Any questions? You're okay with that?
No.
Okay, we'll put that on for first reading. Okay, we'll put that on for first reading. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Next is Board Policy G B D, Title Appointment. In the first paragraph, we were, this was simple word choice change. We replaced the words be rejected by the words fail to be approved. Again, just a word choice. And in the last paragraph, the current wording does not include positions for which certification is or may be required. And so we made a change there and deleted require certification and inserted fall into one or more aforementioned categories. The revision becomes inclusive now of positions outside of Cabinet leads in the L E A, which may or may not require certification. So really just a clean-up.
Any questions on that one? We're good for first reading?
Board Policy G B R G, Non-School Employment. Sort of ironic in reflection, we added other employment. It's in fact, this change really just provides additional clarification with respect to the actual intent of the policy.
Are you okay with that? That was one that we had some discussion. Are you okay with, it's just pretty, pretty clear.
This covers jobs or hobbies. Right, right. And we, yes, Mrs. Frank.
We did have significant discussion about these. So we're, we, we did look at these at the study session and had significant study. So when we're going through this, it's because we had significant study about the word. I mean, you had great word choice before we came in, but we did have significant study about it. So less anyone think we were reading this for the first time and not even going through it. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, next.
The next one is Professional Publishing, Policy G B T. The change here, which is really to requesting to consult with the Communications Department Administrator before submission, before submitting articles for publication, is really reflective of our desired practice and what we've been moving to for a variety of reasons, moving through things through the communication, but perhaps most importantly, at least in my opinion, and I'll ask Fred to delete it if it's inaccurate, but the, is the accuracy of the information that's shared about the district and why it's important to have that office serve as a clearinghouse to the extent possible in publishing.
Any other questions on that one? We're all ready for first reading?
I believe you have, uh, next is an administrative procedure, G B R G B, related to tutoring. And again, this is, as an administrative procedure, we will go ahead and change after tonight. Again, we, we have discussed these changes, and they are simply editorial changes, one grammatical change, and then an editorial change to reflect the current practice of obtaining or maintaining a touring list through the Director of Human Resources as opposed to the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel. And then we also deleted some obsolete, uh, language in that, but you go ahead and, no need to vote or have further conversation on that.
Correct. Correct. And the next one?
The next one, we may, um, provide a little more detailed explanation here. This is a new policy. Spoke with Jill, we came up with the letters G A N, and the title is Prohibition of Family Planning and Abortion Referral. A little bit of background, one of the amendments to the State School Aid Act of two thousand and sixteen was to require districts to adopt a disciplinary policy by October first of two thousand and nineteen that assesses a financial penalty for the following: school officials or staff for violations of M C L three eighty point fifteen oh seven regarding sex education, and specifically the distribution of family planning drugs or devices, and for making abortion referrals or assisting a pupil in obtaining an abortion. The financial penalty for such a violation is, per statute, no less than three percent of the individual's annual compensation. And failure on the district's part to adopt a policy by October first, the district could face a forfeiture from its total state school aid in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. We consulted with our attorneys at Keller Toma and have for you a draft policy, which is in its strictest form, it follows the statutory requirements of this law. And just as a side note, we also talked with some of our neighboring districts and, and they shared with us copies of their policy, and they are very consistent with those we've seen from some of our neighbors. So again, though, we did, uh, draft this in consultation with our legal counsel from Keller Toma. I don't know if you want me to read it?
You know, I think due to the sensitive nature of this, then, that, that would be very valuable. And again, to our community, this is a requirement of state law. We are not adding to or taking away from the requirements, including the financial penalty. This is straight out of state law, and we're required to do so. And the district, if we do not pass such a policy, we will be fined one hundred thousand dollars. So it is significant and real, and we are, we don't have a choice here.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes, Mrs. Kennedy.
Can I, so this has to be in place by October first, correct?
Yes, and we'll, we will address how we're gonna get there.
Okay.
Yes, but thank you for not letting that slide.
But this is considered the first reading of this policy.
That's what I wanted to make clear.
And it stated as such on our agenda, yes.
Um, Mr. Archibald, if you can go ahead and read the policy in its entirety?
Board Policy G A N, Personnel, Prohibition of Family Planning and Abortion Referral. The Board acknowledges the legal requirements of M C L three eight eight point one seven six six and M C L three eight zero point one five zero seven. This policy is meant to comply with these statutory provisions to the extent required by law. Second paragraph, all district employees involved in sex education instruction must adhere to the requirements of M C L three eighty point fifteen oh seven of the Revised School Code. In addition, pursuant to M C L three eighty eight point one seven six six, all district employees, board members, school officials, individuals contracted through a third party, and volunteers are prohibited from dispensing or distributing family planning drugs or devices and referring a student for abortion or assisting a student in obtaining an abortion while in school, on school property, or acting within the scope of their receptive, respective duties. Pursuant to state law, district personnel found to be in violation of this policy will be assessed a fine by the district of no less than three percent of his or her annual compensation. The district will refund the state school aid fund in an amount equal to any fines applied to or collected from district personnel under this policy.
Are there questions or comments regarding the content of this policy? I feel comfortable also that it's, it's, exactly, and that it's gone through our attorneys. Mr. Archibald, does it need to have the legal reference listed on the bottom, just so that it's consistent with our other policies that do refer to state law? I mean, it's clear at the top, but just for consistency, should it be on the bottom?
I will verify if that's necessary.
Okay.
Do you mean the two that are listed in the policy?
Yes, yes. It, I, I recognize it would be redundant, but I'm just wondering if for consistency we should have it down there. Don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, just a thought. Mr. Johnson, do you have a question?
I, I'm just looking at this, and Mrs. Jarvis may know more of the grammatical, but when I'm reading the second sentence of the large second paragraph, it says, in addition, comma, pursuant to M C L three eight eight one seven six six, comma, all district employees, comma, board members, comma, school officials, comma, individuals contracted through a third party, comma, and volunteers are prohibited from dispensing or distributing family planning drugs or devices, comma, and referring a student for abortion or assisting a student in obtaining an abortion while in a school. Shouldn't there be a comma after an abortion? Because it runs in, in obtaining an abortion while in a school.
Yep.
Am I right on that?
Absolutely. Otherwise, if they were to obtain an abortion outside of school, it wouldn't matter.
Well, I think, I think the, to make that clear, I, I think you should take while in a school, on school property, or acting within the scope of their respective duties, and put it after the, the people you're naming. So you would say, in addition, pursuant to M C L thirty, three eighty eight point one seven six six, all district employees, board members, school officials, individuals contracted through a third party, and volunteers while in a school, on school property, or acting within the scope of their respective duties, comma, are prohibited from.
That's a better way to do it.
Because I, I think otherwise.
Because you're not talking about where the student is. You're talking about where the adult is.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
And I believe the law intends while working within the scope of their professional duties.
I knew something looked wrong, but I couldn't tell what it was.
Along the grammatical line, um, third full line from the bottom of that same paragraph says, uh, volunteers, all these others, people and volunteers are prohibited from dispensing or distributing family planning drugs or devices and referring a student for abortion. I think it should say or.
It should say or.
I don't normally suggest changes to things that have gone through our legal department, but I think we're okay with that one, with both of these. Any other suggestions or comments on the content of the policy? We're okay with that?
Ms. Martin?
Yes, Mrs. Frank.
After we do this, do you run it back through our, or once, once we've already, will you run it back through our, our attorneys? Or no, we're kind of?
I'll, I'll make these edits and share it with them. Again, as simple as they seem, I'd like to make sure that we aren't changing the intent.
Mrs. Oakwist?
Yes.
We did have a concern about the October first deadline, as Mrs. Bonfield brought to our attention again, and could you run us by the situation of having, this counts as our first reading?
This is the first reading, because this is a public meeting and it was part of our agenda. The second reading will take place on next week at our regular board meeting, and then the board would take a vote at that time to determine whether to adopt this or not.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Which would, which would put us within the timeline, you know, to avoid any fine by the district.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
And that concludes policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. That takes us to, uh, Item B. Oh, that, we already did Item B. Okay. So that takes us to Item Six, our Finance Committee. Mrs. Bonfield.
I do not. Superintendent Oakwist?
We do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonfield. That takes us to Item Seven, Legislative. Mrs. Bradford.
I do not. Do we have anything, Mrs. Oakwist?
Well, I, obviously, I send, send many emails your way with regard to legislative updates, and obviously, we're, we're keeping a close eye on the legislature's work and the governor's work on a state budget. As you know, we are now into the third week of school without a budget appropriations for the School Aid Act. And so, as you know, we move forward in, to meet our obligations by June thirtieth to have a budget in place. The state is required to do so as well by October first, so we're monitoring that closely. I continue to share updates with you as I receive them, and we continue to be in contact with our representatives on this important topic.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
I just, I'd like to just mention that both our state senator, Paul Henke, and our state representative, Potzky, have both reached out and have been in contact with us with regard to the attendance of the bill, and the senator spent an extended period of time last week talking about the impact of the per pupil funding, as well as taking a look at the delineation as part of the School Finance Research Collaborative for the weighted funding formulas. And so we had a, a good dialogue about that and the impact of the increased reimbursement for the special education dollars. So we continue to monitor that closely and advocate for our legislature to take a very, very close look and serious consideration of the recommendations made in the School Finance Research Collaborative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.